I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Glad to have you all with us, board members, staff. Good to see everybody virtually and for all of our community members who are watching. Welcome and good to have you join us for tonight's board meeting. It is Tuesday, November 10th, and this is our regular meeting. So again, welcome to everybody. Just want to remind everybody of when you are not presenting or not speaking, if you wouldn't mind turning off your video and muting yourselves just to reduce background noise. And also it helps save the bandwidth so folks aren't having internet problems. That would be helpful. Thank you. And as we do at every board meeting, I will read our board norms and protocols. As a board, we agree to respect the differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. And as I read through those, I'm reminded that Dr. Weisman, as part of our KASB training, board members, you should have received an email from her that has this rubric for us to do a self-evaluation on ourselves after our meeting. She emailed that out. Ms. Smith also emailed that this afternoon. And it's just a self-reflection after we have our board meeting to see how we did with our norms. And it's just a reflection on yourself that you would do on yourself silently afterwards. It takes some time. So if you haven't already seen that, it should be in your inbox. You can print it out and do it after the meeting or tomorrow, just when you have some time. I think she wants to go over some of these at our next KASB training. So with that, Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, everybody. With that, I would take a motion to approve tonight's regular agenda.
Go move.
Second.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any questions, discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
ACF.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody. So we will jump right into our awards and recognitions. And I think Dr. Miguel, Ms. Jody Mitchell, have something to share with us tonight.
I did. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So you can see on your screen, I'm here to talk about the Horizon Award nominees for Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. We have two nominees, Abigail Morris from Stony Point North and Rachel Leonard from Schlegel High School. And just to remind you, the Horizon Awards is an award intended to celebrate a first-year teacher. And each district in Kansas gets to nominate one from elementary and one from secondary. And they write an essay and get certain approvals and acknowledgements from their peers and the superintendent. And then those go to the state. And then KSDE looks at all the nominations from all the districts, and they pick their winners, one from elementary, one from secondary. So I just wanted to present to the board, these are our two nominees. And they should find out in January who the winners are. So we wish both of these ladies the best of luck and hope to hear back that they are a winner potentially for the state of Kansas in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. And congratulations to our two nominees. Super exciting to see that and hear that. So thank you for that presentation. Any questions from the board? For Dr. Miguel? Okay. Thank you so much, Jody. Appreciate it. And best of luck to our teachers representing our district. Thank you. All right. Tonight, we have no community comment that was submitted. I will just remind folks, if you would like to have something submitted for community comment, please email or call our board clerk, Ms. Smith, and she will get your comment on our board agenda. Please do so by noon, the Monday before the board meeting, so your comment can be submitted. But tonight, we have no community comment that was submitted. So thank you. We'll move right along with our agenda. And Dr. Miguel.
Thank you. Maybe I'll mute, Dr. Miguel.
I know. I knew this would happen. If you guys give me one minute. So, good evening, everyone. We have lots of things to share. And as usual, we are going to start with some news from schools. Just to remind ourselves that we are in the business of educating children. And we always want to hear from schools on the good things that they are doing. Today, we're focusing especially on successful strategies that our schools are using to connect with students and families. So we have two schools that are going to share what they are doing. We have Dr. Cesar Alvarez and Assistant Principal Jody Mosler from Francis Willard Elementary, if you are with us, to share your good news.
Thank you, Board President Lopez, Vice President Brownlee Page, board members, and Dr. Miguel, for this opportunity to share the great things that we're doing here at Francis Willard. As you know, at Francis Willard, we strive to build great relationships and also increase student progress. So one of the things that we are doing is that we try to increase our student attendance. As you know, our students cannot learn if they're not able to log on. And so one of the things that we have noticed is that, obviously, with connectivity issues, as we wanted to make sure that we were working on finding support systems. And here at Francis Willard, we created an attendance committee made up of myself, Ms. Mosler, the assistant principal, Ms. Hafner, the instructional coach, Ms. Shelby, Ms. Freer, our two counselors, Ms. Snyder, our social worker, Ms. Thomas, our attendance secretary, and the teachers. So you see, this is a big effort, right, that we've taken as a whole approach to support our students. And so one of the things that we did was we created a Google document that the teachers can submit how the students are needing additional support from us. And so it is truly an all-hands-on-deck effort on our part to make sure that we are accessing our resources, whether it's Care for Kids organization partners, making sure that we have access to the connectivity hub, even as far as doing home visits where we will find out really what's going on, right? Having those difficult conversations with the student, but also the parents. And so that has been something that really has benefited our students. And I see a huge benefit and increase in the attendance for our students at Francis Willard. Ms. Mosler?
So the only thing that I want to add in that sets us apart from what other schools are doing is with this attendance committee, we are including teachers in the process, and we're including parents in the process. So we're diving in to find out, why is it the student is having problems with attendance? We're analyzing that, and then we're coming up with a game plan together to break down those barriers. And that has been a huge success, is when you can get everybody involved, figure out what's going on, and come up with a plan to make it happen.
And so I could tell you that at Francis Willard, for the end of the quarter number one, the average overall attendance was 91.7 attendance rate. And if you take into account that that addresses the improvement of our student population, as in the beginning, we had more students who were not able to access, but now are actually been able to log on and do their work.
Thank you so much, Dr. Alvarez and Ms. Mosler. Great way to build community and to make sure that parents and students are involved in their own attendance. That's what we want to do, make sure that we build that responsibility. So thank you so much. And now we have Mr. Travis Helms from Rosedale Middle School.
Yeah. Hello, Dr. Miguel, Ms. Lopez. How's everybody doing?
Good.
I'm talking about porch visits. It's something we started here at Rosedale about three weeks ago, really just to look to reconnect kids who have maybe either they've stopped connecting or they're not regularly connecting, or when they are showing up, they're not participating, or we're not seeing any production from them, when they, no work turned in, anything like that. So it starts with recommendations from our teachers, students that they're most concerned with. And then for the process, the first thing we do is we call. We call home because we want to know, when I'm coming out or whoever's coming out, what we need to bring with us. Is it an issue with your computer? Is it Wi-Fi? Is it a hotspot? Do you need supplies? You know, we double check so we can bring those things with us when we go. Even if we don't get ahold of you on the phone, we're still going to go and try and connect. We just carry some of those things with us, just in case. But it is nice to have that pre-call ahead of time, just to kind of put them at ease a little bit. One of the things we've noticed, or at least I've noticed, is parents get really nervous when they know I'm coming to their house, or if I just show up at their house. And so I really want to put them at ease, let them know that, you know, I'm just here to help however I can. So we look at the barriers. I heard the previous group talk about the barriers. You know, what's getting in the way of the student's success, and then how I can help. So, you know, just for one example, the other day, you know, the house had really good, has Wi-Fi. The problem is, the young lady is going to her aunt's house every day because the mom works. Well, the aunt's house doesn't have Wi-Fi. So we had to get a hotspot for her to take to her aunt's house every day so that she can connect. The biggest situation we're seeing is where parents that work, kids are staying home, and then they're not connecting, and the parents don't always know that they're not connecting. So we look at ways that we can monitor that, shoot the parents an email, say, hey, you know, the first two hours, so-and-so didn't get on, you know. And so the parents are more aware that way, and then that way, we're connecting. But what the biggest thing we want families to know is that we really care about their students. Our staff's very dedicated. They're very concerned when kids aren't online. So our deans, our counselors, our social workers, our faces, all of us are making the porch visits. It's not just me. And so far, I would say we've had some good success stories. We've had some where they haven't, it hasn't helped. But for the most part, it's, I would say, short-term, so we have to just keep revisiting it. So they got on for a while, maybe after a week, they kind of leveled back off. So we've just got to make sure we're just re-going through that process with them.
Thank you so much, Mr. Helms. Great ideas that I know other principals are going to take advantage of. And we have heard from several schools about the porch visits and how effective those are and how they help keep communication ongoing with families. So thank you so much for going the extra mile. That's wonderful. A few other things that we want to share, this is National Native American Heritage Month, and KCKPS is celebrating the month in a number of ways, from sharing stories around the history of the month to stories around the history of Native Americans right here in the Kansas City metro area. So check out our website, our social media for those stories. Tomorrow, November 11th, is Veterans Day. KCKPS will join the nation, the nation to honor Veterans Day. This is a day honoring all of those who have served the country. And the district has so many people who have personally served and/or who have loved ones that fought and are still fighting for the safety of our country. So we want to say thank you from the bottom of our heart. We appreciate what you do to keep us safe and to keep us free. And we ask you that you join us on social media handles tomorrow as we honor staff members. Yes, big hands to everyone from our district. And we highlight the efforts to help those veterans suffering from PTSD, which is a real struggle. So thank you again, and we will keep mentioning you throughout the week and in our social media. We have some updates for the above and beyond bonus, and that's the bonus that we were paying staff that had to go above and beyond their call of duty during the pandemic. A total of 636 employees have already received payment for the above and beyond bonus for a total payment of $561,782.30. And tonight, in our HR report, we have an additional 18 staff members who will be approved for payment for a total of $6,102. So we want to remind everyone that there is a process. If you are not on the list to receive this bonus, please follow the process. HR is sending an employee acknowledgement to all employees. This is a one-page document that explains the bonus, provides the link if you want to make an appeal. And I want to say, you're welcome to email us if you want to appeal. But the easiest and fastest way to get the concerns resolved is if you use this link because it goes straight to HR and to the people who will review your appeal. So there is a signature line that states that people have read it. We want to make sure that we can monitor that everybody who needs to receive this information does receive it, and that's the purpose of the signature, so that we can keep track and we can reach employees who may not have received it otherwise. So this will allow us to communicate the same message to all employees and to make sure that anyone who has a case for appeal can be heard. So after the meeting tonight, the total amount will be $567,884 paid on above and beyond bonus. And the total number of employees after tonight's approval will be 654 employees. So again, be looking for that document that will provide the link. If you have an appeal, if you think you should have been paid and did not, we are reviewing every single case. So please reach out. A quick update on the YMCA childcare. At this point, we have 26 children from our employees who are taking advantage of what we're offering at the Joe Amayo and the Bethel sites. And we have two Kansas City, Kansas staff members working to support this initiative. We have lots of empty seats. We have, I think, capacity for 80 children at Bethel. So if you are one of the employees who has to report in person and you have children and need childcare, please remember, this is free to you. Take advantage of this. It's also American Education Week, quickly approaching. It's the week of November 16th. So that's a time for us to celebrate the power of public education and recognize the people who are really helping to keep students on track. So to everyone working so hard, we want to say thank you, and we want to acknowledge that the district would not be successful without you. A quick update also on our Enough is Enough campaign. The district is happy to say that we're receiving lots of feedback from teachers, parents, community around the area. We have a number of students joining the cause and speaking up and speaking out about their desire to see a stop to the violence in our community. Their photos and videos have started to run this week on our social media handles. In addition, people from the community can now come and get their own blue ribbon to show support. We ask that you do this. You can find it here at the district office. There are also flyers and ribbons being delivered with our grab-and-go meal. So if you are going to pick up a meal, you can also pick up the blue ribbons. We want to remind everyone to sign on to enough.kckps.org and sign the pledge. We cannot do this alone. This has to be a community effort. And thank you so much for supporting us. Good news, our phone system is being updated. Thank you to Mr. Hoda. We heard from the community and from some board members, sometimes you would call our main number, and after hearing the message, the call would drop. There was nothing for you to do if you didn't reach a person. So now we have a menu that you can make a selection. So it will say something like, if you do not reach a person. So if you call, you do not reach a person because the person answering the phones is on a call or because you call after hours, you will get a menu that will say, for HR, press 1, or for Superintendent's Office, press 9, whatever department you are trying to reach. Once you press that number, you will either reach a person in that department or you will reach a voicemail, and you will be able to leave a message. Voicemail will be emptied, and calls will be returned within 24 hours. So thank you again, Mr. Hoda, for setting this up. He worked very hard to make it work and to get the information from all of the departments. Another big thank you to Kansas City, Kansas Public School Police Department. They were very busy this week delivering coats to people who needed them, getting ready. Although the weather is so nice, we are getting ready for cold weather. So we wanted to make sure that everyone who needed a coat had one. And they did that this week, and we truly appreciate it. Last but not least, I said it was lots of good news, right? But last but not least, this is School Psychology Week. I want to personally thank all of our school psychologists who work so hard to keep our students on track and provide the assistance they need. Thank you so much. And that's all for me. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Dr. Miguel. Lots of great things going on in our district and lots of things to acknowledge. Thank you for all the updates. I'd encourage anyone that has questions to please reach out for any further clarification on any of the topics that Dr. Miguel spoke on. She took most of my updates, but I'll just...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Which is great. That's great. A couple of things I'll just share, again, I just, you know, on behalf of the board, and Dr. Miguel said it perfectly, we just want to honor and acknowledge all of our veterans, past and present, who serve our country every single day, sometimes giving the ultimate sacrifice. And so we are so grateful. Our country is here because of you, and so we have our freedoms because of you. So thank you, and we honor and salute all of our veterans, past and present. So thank you for all that you have done, you and your families. We honor all of you. So thank you. I do want to give a quick, just a quick update. I know that some folks have reached out to different board members. This was, I was asked to share and to acknowledge some emails that we've received regarding our school buildings names. We have those. And we are not ignoring our concerns regarding our school names, and we will be looking into reviewing those at a future meeting. There's just, the agendas have been very packed, but we do acknowledge, and we will get to that at a future board meeting. Again, just want to say thank you to all of our teachers and staff. As we celebrate Education Week, you all are an amazing group. And we couldn't do what we do without all of you, obviously. So we are here for our kids, and so I thank you for all of your work. And lastly, I just want to say congratulations to one of our very own on her reelection this past week, Dr. Valdivia Nguyen, who was re-elected back to her seat in the state. So we are so excited for you and for our community and the great things that you advocate for and represent our community. So thank you. And I think that's it. I don't know if any other board members had anything else to share before we move on?
Can I... Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'd just like to say that on Saturday, there was a state legislative committee meeting that I attended, and we looked at state resolutions that are going to be presented the first of the year. And so that information will be coming to the board members later.
Thank you, Ms. Drew.
And this is Yolanda. I just wanted to back into, and I know our teachers and principals and everyone that presented tonight are doing a great job. But one thing that has helped me as a parent is Infinite Campus. I just want to remind you that as I have two kids that are logging in every day, I would get a "your son is absent" real quick on my phone. And so if you're not home, and you're able to set that up on your phones, it was great. And then quickly, it would change to "your son is present." So just another tool through Infinite Campus that has become very, has been very helpful to me.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. We always love to hear directly from the parent experience to see what's working and what we need to adjust. Thank you for that feedback.
Okay. No other updates? All right. Thank you, board. Thank you, Dr. Miguel, for your updates and for all the great news you've shared today. All right. So we will move right along into our board updates. And first off, we have Ms. Darcy Swan, who will be presenting to us. Welcome.
Thank you. All right. Well, good evening. Good evening, President Lopez, Vice President Brownlee Page, Board of Education, and Dr. Miguel. My name is Darcy Swan, and I am the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. I've been with KCK since the end of July, and I am proudly beginning my 23rd year in education. And I'm very excited to be joining the KCKPS team. So tonight, I will be defining the vision for resource adoption in our district set forth by the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. And I will also be sharing our goals and long-range resource adoption plans, our budgetary implications, and finally, the proposal for the K5 Science Resource, which is Amplify. Our vision for resource adoption encompasses our values of aligning to our district goals as well as pedagogical shifts in resources and instructional practices, cultural relevance, equitable access for all students to core resources, and a focus on student-centered learning and decision-making. In September, the CNI Department created and articulated process for what we will follow for all resource adoptions that allows for teacher voice and community and stakeholder input. It sets the expectation that we will use evaluation criteria grounded in current research and efficacy studies. I'm sorry, did I not hit present? Sorry. Is that better for everybody to see? Our work will be grounded in current research and efficacy studies as well as recommendations from the Kansas State Department of Education. We will hold ourselves accountable to the process that we've set forth tonight to ensure that we are consistent in how we do business as well as how we will bring information to you as the board when we are in an adoption process. We want to make this as consistent and transparent as possible. Our criteria and evaluation procedures, regardless of grade level or content, consists of strong standards alignment, opportunities for rigor and critical thinking, and resources for differentiating and scaffolding instruction for our students. Also essential will be a relevant and highly engaging student experience with the resources as well as high-quality professional learning for our teachers and our staff. Our goal as a team is to proactively plan ahead for long-range adoption cycle with the intention of being fiscally responsible and meeting the needs of our students with the best materials that they deserve in order to keep us competitive with our neighboring districts. When I joined the CNI team in July, we did not have an articulated long-range adoption cycle. So with the assistance of my curriculum coordinator, Susie Legg, we created a plan that provides for a six-year cycle, knowing we will need to make adjustments along the way due to a number of factors that we know present themselves each year. The dilemma is that we have not been on a regular adoption cycle up to this point, and we have gaps in content areas where we have outdated materials that may not align with standards changes. Our material may be old and not easily replaced if lost or damaged because it may or may not be in print. We also should acknowledge the years of economic downturn when most districts froze monies for district resource spending, which left many of us behind in adoption cycles. In our adoption plan, we are prioritizing our needs and hoping to be able to fill some of those gaps in the next three years to get us to that long-range goal of one major adoption area per year. This year, we are set to adopt K5 science materials. We also will be investigating world language options this year and social studies options. As a department, we are working collaboratively with other departments to really think creatively. One example is how we are looking at the potential for leveraging library databases and resources to help support the instruction of social studies standards. Our hope is to work closely with the library team to help us align relevant resources to our standards that will also support our research standards in ELA. Obviously, some years will be more costly than others, but we will be flexible with our plan. But we will always keep our priorities at the forefront of our decision-making. As you can see, this is the continuation of the cycle, and the board has been presented a copy of this cycle. Our goal is to provide for a plan that allows us one major content area adoption per year. Susie and I actually have this planned out until about 2035. And so hopefully, in being kind of creative with how we're going to do textbook and resource adoption the next two to three years, will help us get on track for a plan that is sustainable. Resource adoptions take into account the teacher and student materials, which primarily come as digital licenses and may or may not include hard copies of materials. It depends... It depends on the publisher, and it may be even driven by the content. There are often student consumables and ancillary teacher materials. And in the case of science, there will be supplies to consider as well as platform fees for online materials and sometimes shipping costs for any hard copy materials that we would have in the adoption. Professional learning is also part of the adoption process and is critical to ensuring successful implementation. All right, importantly, we want to show that our board priorities are important to us. And in all textbook adoptions or resource adoptions, we want to make sure that we are meeting the high expectations for student achievement, that we are being good stewards of resources and financial accountability and making sure that we are transparent with the board about that and trying to stay true to our long-range plan. And the professional development that we require through all of our textbook adoptions will support us in a high-performing workforce. Because as most of us know, having good resources in the hands of teachers will support us with teacher retention. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Cheryl Byer. She is the EC5 Science Curriculum Coach, who is with us tonight, and she will share the information regarding what was done to get us to the recommendation that we are bringing tonight as information only regarding Amplify as our science resource.
Thank you, Darcy. I am going to start off kind of going through the proposal in our process with a quote from the Framework for K-12 Science Education upon which the next-generation science standards were built, because it kind of frames our work and sets the shifts in motion because the next-generation science standards that were adopted in 2013 shifts, shifts instead of learning just about science, but actual the knowledge of science and the practice of science and intertwining those two things and being able to help students make sense of phenomena in the world around them. So, that's kind of our intent and kind of frames our work as we move forward. This process started back in September of 2019, and we applied that larger criteria of being a phenomena-based resource with sense-making of the phenomena to about five different resources. We, too, really met that criteria, we felt like, and we took those two to the cadre and really applied a more rigorous criteria and gathered evidence. And on those two resources, Amplify scored much higher. And based on that criteria, we then presented the resource to staff and community at a sneak peek where teachers, administrators, and community members came in and got to look at the actual hands-on materials as well as the online resources and give us feedback. Then, we also did, in quarter three of last year, did a teacher pilot to try out a unit and get feedback to help support implementation as well. Quick shout-out to all of those wonderful cadre and pilot teachers with all the hard work and dedication that they gave because that was a huge thanks and a lot of work by all of those teachers. So, thank you. So, a little bit about the process. In your packet, you will see there's a sneak peek info sheet that has the information about the criteria that we used. It's basically a suite of tools that, and processes that's been created by a collaboration of WestEd Science, BSCS Science Learning, and Next Gen Science, which was formally achieved. They created this criteria to help educators implement and evaluate materials that are designed for next-generation science standards. So, the very first thing we looked at were the foundations, and that's were the materials phenomenon-based, logical sense, or logical sequence of phenomena and problem that engaged and allowed students sense-making in all three dimensions. And the three dimensions of the NGSS is something that is new to these standards. It wasn't in our old standards, but it's basically using science and engineering practices in context to understand the disciplinary core ideas, which are the concepts of science, but then also using concepts that are true for all disciplines and to make sense of phenomena and problems as well. So, all three dimensions need to be present. We also looked at student thinking and looked at the authentic experiences and relevant experiences and how the materials leveraged prior, student prior knowledge in order to create equitable learning opportunities. We looked at student progress and how the materials used three-dimensional assessments to elicit observable evidence for those learning goals and measured growth. Then, lastly, we looked at what support there was for teachers. Did the materials offer background information for the teachers? Was there coherence of student experiences? And was there support and effective support within the materials for diverse learners? You'll see throughout, there are some pictures of the pilot, and we'll talk a little bit about those pictures as we go through. But this, these are the average scores from the cadre in those four areas. And as you'll see, Amplify pulled ahead, especially in the last two areas, student progress and support for teachers. And this really aligned with the results we saw from the cadre, the responses that teachers gave us, because they really did see a lot more engagement, authentic engagement in the student learning and the scientific discussions. They really dived deeper into the learning and really seemed to understand the content at a deeper level with concepts that are sometimes very difficult to understand. We also got responses that there is, it's very student-centered and very relevant experiences that the students are engaging in throughout the Amplify units. So, currently, our materials are not aligned to the NGSS. They are aligned to old Kansas standards. The NGSS, as I mentioned, were adopted in 2013. So, we have made shifts of the old materials in an attempt to address the topics within the NGSS. However, some topics aren't addressed because there aren't materials for that. And like I said, the three-dimensionality of the sense-making around a phenomena are not, are not present. So, teachers are having to go off and find resources. Sometimes they're creating their own and just kind of creating some challenges to not have standards-aligned resources to use. The last time we adopted a resource purchase was in 2010. As you can see here, there are students that are engaging in one of the Amplify pilot units. This was a simulation of mixing molecules to understand the attraction of the degree of attraction, I guess, of molecules in order to their food scientist. So, they were creating a salad dressing that didn't separate and tasted good. So, that was one of the units. We also saw a lot of benefits from using Amplify Science. As you'll see here, again, students are not just learning about science, they're engaging in it. They're in, there's that integration of ELA, disciplinary literacy, and math standards. The reading and writing and talking and using those essential practices of science to gather information, to communicate claims, leverage evidence and conclusions. So, they've really integrated all of those ELA and math standards, and they incorporate those. We did a survey with teachers, and one of the biggest obstacles teachers find is the time to teach science. So, this really supports that need because it does integrate and allow for an extension of that learning because it incorporates those content standards into the curriculum. It's also aligned to the NGSS, so teachers will spend less time having to go outside and create their own materials or search for materials that align as well. So, Darcy, with that, I will send it back to you.
Great, and we just want to point out that Amplify also uses a very gold-standard pedagogical approach, the do-talk, read-write, visualize. And so, that was also one of the key pieces that teachers found very useful and really helped with student achievement and student progress. Something else to point out is that locally, Garden City, Olathe, and Auburn Washburn are using Amplify. And Cheryl, in her research, found that lots of large urban areas are also using Amplify to meet their science goals and their science needs. We also look through the lens of the strategic plan. And if we consider number two, which is expanding opportunities for college and career readiness at all grade levels, we are focusing on understanding phenomena instead of just simply teaching topics. We're focusing on problem-solving and critical thinking. And most importantly, our students are simulating roles such as scientists or engineers in order to understand the application of the science that they are learning. Okay, so, when we talk about the actual adoption process, Amplify provides us a six-year adoption for six grade levels. We will receive all necessary resources and materials from Amplify for the life of the adoption. And this includes teacher licenses for general and special education staff as well as ESL support staff. We also will receive student book licenses and materials, which also includes materials kits that provide us hardcover or at least handheld materials, print materials for student readers, science equipment, consumable materials. We have professional learning built into our proposal. Now, the cost of these materials is a little over $1 billion, which is very typical of a large-scale adoption as we're looking at making sure that we have all the resources we need for all the staff and students who need it. If you would break that amount down into what is the cost per student per year? It's about $16.89 per student per year for a six-year adoption. Due to the hard work of Cheryl and Suzie, they were able to negotiate with a company a $380,000 savings. And the way in which we were able to do that is we are planning on breaking that million-dollar cost over two years. We will pay half of that out of this year's budget. We will receive the materials, all of the materials from the adoption this year. And then, we will pay the second half of that adoption price next year. What that does for us is it still allows us about three, you know, $387,000 this year, approximately $363,000 next year that we can use towards those other goals that we know that we have. Priority this year is science, but we also know that we're looking at some materials for world language and social studies. We're working hard around, you know, working with other departments such as library to help fill some of those needs as well. But that does leave us local room to continue to meet the needs of our long-range plan. And once that has happened, we will be on a six-year adoption cycle for K5 Science. So, again, I'm trying to meet our strategic priorities that the board has set forth for us with a focus on solid professional development from the company. I know that in your packet, you have Cheryl's professional learning plan that she provided. What was important to us was also the support for onboarding new teachers as well as not just providing professional learning for the resource, but professional learning around instructional practices. Because that is really the heart of where, you know, the rubber meets the road with a good resource, but also the instruction and what that looks like in the classroom. Lastly, the CNI team will ask for board approval for the K5 Science adoption on December 1st. Our next steps as a team will be to continue our cadre work with other potential resource adoptions for this school year. We are going to continue monitoring our adoption cycle goals to make sure that we are staying on track and being flexible when we need to be flexible, continuing educating our departments across the district in regards to our resource needs so that we can work more systemically as a district to work with, you know, ESL, special education, library media services to help us meet our needs, find potential partnerships across the district to help support our resource needs and provide a budget proposal to our finance department this year that is proactively articulating our budgetary needs moving forward. And with that, I will open it up to any questions. Cheryl is here, Suzie Legg is here, and I am here to help answer those questions.
Thank you, Ms. Swan and Ms. Byer for the presentation information board. Please note that this will come for potential approval for adoption at our December meeting. So, we have some time to think about this for the purposes of time. And I want to make sure we have, I think we've got time for maybe one or two questions, but I want to make sure we honor everyone's time. If you have additional questions that we don't get to, you have all the information in your board packet, please send any questions to myself, Ms. Page, and Dr. Miguel, and we can get your questions answered. But we do have a little bit of time for maybe one or two questions from any board members.
This is Wanda Brownlee Page. I have a question. In terms of online, do you have some support system for parents that they can get online and utilize some of these materials? Because when we buy books, and I know things are changing, and we're doing, right now, kids are virtual learning, but when we get back to the classroom, if there's a class set of books, or I don't know if each kid is getting a book, I guess that's one question, will each child get a book? Or will there be a classroom set? And are there these same materials online? So, the parents can go to them if they need to help their kids. So, will each kid get a book? My first question.
Hey, Cheryl, do you want to address, or Suzie, do you want to address the materials since you were part of the pilot last year?
Yeah, I can address that. So, they're student readers, and they're meant to be used as a collaborative reader. So, no, not every student will have a book. They're meant to use as resource books, they'll get information from it. So, there'll be a, like I said, a collaborative set for each class. However, we do have access to the electronic version of those books. So, they will have individual access to those at home or on their computer at school as well.
And this is Yolanda, and I'm not expecting an answer tonight at all. And I think, I don't even know if you ladies can answer this question when it does come time. We approved, and I'm not saying that books are not important, so please know that. I just want to say that ahead of time. I want to understand our financial obligation. So, maybe this is something that, Dr. Miguel, we take away because we approve books for math, and I can't remember like all the different things. So, I'm just trying to understand, like, if we look five, five to seven years out from now, what are we looking at and what are we still paying for is really my question. Again, I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but just thinking about all of the different, I'm going to use the word bills that we have.
Sure. Well, this particular resource, we're looking at breaking the cost over two years. That is not the best-case scenario for every large adoption that we're doing. But because of the, what I'm going to call the pickle we're in right now, trying to catch up on all of the resources that we do need to update, our goal would be in the next four to five years, we get to a cycle where we're only doing one major textbook adoption a year, which means we would be able to sustain those purchases, particularly with the fact that we're going to be proactively planning ahead for those and doing proposals to our finance department to show what our needs are for that year. And some, some years, there will be less of a need than others in terms of cost. For example, when you're doing an elementary reading adoption, those typically are more costly because of the big books, the vocabulary cards, the ancillary materials that come with those. Other adoptions that might be more subscription-based, maybe less expensive. So, some years will be more expensive than others. We're hoping that with a more proactive plan, we can help as a district plan for that. So, that's part of that goal. So, I would say in the next four to five years, Ms. Clark, we hope to be on cycle, knowing that the next two to three, we may have to be creative with these kinds of negotiations with companies so that we can get the resources in the hands of kids and teachers and be fiscally back on track within the next three, three to four years.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'm not saying books, our students need their books. I was just thinking about the, what we approved for math and then what we're looking at approving here. So, that was definitely my thought.
And maybe what we can bring forth to the board is that long-term adoption cycle with estimate projections of how much it would cost so that you could, and I think what may be important to bring to the board is based on what yearly budget we're working on so that you can see whether it's going to be covered by that year's budget. So, we can work on that for the December meeting if it brings more clarity. Thank you, Ms. Clark.
And it may just be me that wonders, I just, I mean.
That's good information. I think it's good for all of us to think about that, to be proactive. So, I appreciate it.
Dr. Miguel, let me, let me add that as far as those math adoptions that we've done before, we have no outstanding bill for that. We paid those bills.
Right, thank you.
Hi, I have a quick question to add to the list for next week. I know it's stretched out to 2035, and quite honestly, that really frightens me. I don't feel like we should be behind for the next 15 years. So, I was wondering, I know it's stretched out for the long-range plan and things of that nature, but I really want to know what do we need? I remember last time Matt presented us with a great presentation of how we can catch up and the money and resources that we will need. So, I just want to know how do we create, or if you have a creative budget and book outline as far as what will catch us up to where everything will align? It's, and when we were presented with this information, last time, we were all shocked that we have 15 years of information out of date. And I believe it's very important for us to be up to date. And I believe it's very important for us to be up to date now rather than pushing it back. Our children need to be aligned, well, we, all of our curriculum, all of our standards need to align with state standard period. And I know that we have a budget, but the reality is we have a goal to make sure our children are no longer in schools that continually are on probation for lack of education, for lack of. So I just really want to know when everything will be aligned to the Kansas State standard sooner than later.
So currently, we have updated ELA resources for six twelve. We have updated ELA resources for four or five. Math is now updated six twelve. Science was updated last year, six through eight. This year, we're trying to bring science onboard as well as social studies, world language, with science being our priority. We are hoping to be caught up in the next three years so that we are now on cycle because math is not outdated for K five, but we will be up for adoption again. The purchase would be in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year for twenty twenty-four implementation. So the only pieces where we are needing to do a little catch-up would be science K five. I would love for us to be able to do an ELA adoption of a core resource that is focused on structured literacy and phonemic awareness and phonics instruction. For K three, that would be my hope. And then looking at science nine twelve. What happens in a couple of years is we have to look at extensions because some of the resources that have been purchased to this point are only three-year adoptions. And we want to make those six-year adoptions to get us on the cycle we need to be on. So it's not necessarily that we are so far behind in being up to date. It's just that we, we have to update science K five. I would like to see an ELA K three update because we do have some gaps with, with reading and our phonics sequence. And we should be back on track in the following year because then we're just looking at extensions, not new adoptions. And then we'll be on a cycle for six-year adoptions moving forward. Does that make sense?
So Dr. Yeager, actually, yeah, when we did that adoption last year, that caught us up quite a bit because we did have a huge adoption of resources. And so that took, I mean, that was a bulk of what was behind or outdated. With the next three years, us making these next few purchases, they will definitely get us back in on track, so to speak. For example, math K five, we adopted that a few years ago when I was in the department as the math person. So that is up to date. It is aligned to the Kansas standards. So once we get past the twenty-two, twenty-three year, we'll be on a cycle where our kids are getting the most up-to-date resources that are available. So this, this is a, the fifteen years isn't for, we're behind fifteen years. It really is, we're behind three years now, but we'll get caught up in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
And then we'll be on track moving forward.
Okay, so I think to add for the December first is although we're not on track right now, what are we doing to fill in the gaps? And again, doesn't have to be answered tonight, but just with the next meeting.
That's a great question. Thank you, Dr. Yeager.
Thank you, everybody. So again, as a reminder, this will come before the board again at the next meeting in December. So please, if you have additional questions, please, please, please send those to Dr. Miguel and we will make sure we get those answered and shared with the whole board so that we are all clear on what we're doing and make the most informed decision that we can. Thank you again, Ms. Swan, Ms. Byer for the information, Mr. Anderson for the, for the information. So thank you. Okay, so we will move on with our agenda. Dr. Miguel?
Yeah, the next item is to accept as an information app, item and update on the application process for early graduation. And I would like to invite Dr. Pitch to join us.
Good evening, esteemed members of the board. Rashid, are we ready? Thank you, sir. And good evening, Dr. Miguel and stakeholders virtually attending tonight's board meeting. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present information so very relevant to our students, especially in, as the conditions for public education have changed so abruptly over the last seven months. For this evening, I would like to provide a brief description of early graduation policies in our district. Additionally, I will spend some time illustrating the student application process as well as the work that the campus and central office staff do in order to ensure that our students and their families know their graduation options in KC KPS. In this way, all parties can be fully informed of the steps and considerations made and our board can be confident that any decisions they make will rely on the most complete information available. Current KC KPS district policy allows enrolled in students to apply for early graduation as long as they have met the following criteria. First, they must have completed all required coursework, which includes twenty-five credits distributed across cores and electives using the displayed formula. They are also required to work with school counseling staff to develop and document a post-graduation plan, which illustrates their focus and intent after they have been allowed to graduate early. Both the student and their legal guardian must submit in writing to the superintendent a request for early graduation that includes reasons supporting that request. Lastly, their request for early graduation must be reviewed and approved by the KC KPS Board of Education, a review performed on a case-by-case basis. On the student side, their early graduation request will trigger a full credit audit to ensure that not only do they have the required number of courses, but also the correct combination to satisfy KC KPS graduation requirements. They will also work directly with counselors and college and career facilitators to ensure that they have been given all their possible options before submitting their application. For example, a student who wishes to graduate early and enroll in college may be better served by taking dual credit courses as a KC KPS student, which entitles them to receive these college credit courses for free and a cost savings of hundreds of dollars for them and their family. It is these conversations and others that will be conducted with students and their guardians to ensure that early graduation is the correct fit. The student will develop their post-graduation plan during this process as well, which ensures that they have a plan after graduation that will allow them to engage and become highly successful in whatever life pathway they choose. The final step before their application is submitted is a conference with their legal guardian and the campus principal in order to review the options and ensure once more that everyone has all the information and the student's decision is supported by their legal guardian. As shown, campus responsibilities include facilitating the PGP process, conducting the credit and course audit, and ensuring that all options have been reviewed with the student and guardian conferences. The act of endorsement by the campus principal signifies that early graduation is the best option for that particular student based on their individual circumstances and that the application is complete in its entirety and ready for review and ultimately submission to the board. Once the application is received at the district office, a final review of the contents will be conducted for completeness before it is sent to the superintendent for final approval and board consideration. In closing, I want to be clear that the early graduation application is not designed for the general student population. We always want to encourage students to complete all four years, experience the milestones and memorable events that are included in the high school experience. We believe that KC KPS is well-positioned to support students into post-graduation the best when a student follows the general plan for attendance and graduation. However, we also believe that there are circumstances that exist, both uplifting and challenging in our students' lives, and we want to be flexible in the support of our scholars as they enter the next important stages of life after graduation. To these ends, I have highlighted just some of the circumstances that have prompted students to request that early graduation processes be made more readily available. This concludes my portion of this presentation, and I would like to provide an opportunity for esteemed members of the board to ask follow-up questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Pitch, for the information. Board members, any questions for Dr. Pitch?
Thank you for sharing. I appreciate a written process on this. I know sometimes we get questions about it, and I really like that it's streamlined and outlined very clearly. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Pitch? If not, Dr. Pitch, thank you so much for the information. We appreciate it. Thanks for all your work you're doing.
Thank you.
The next one is, as promised, an update on school reentry. And in preparation for school reentry in January, we have committed to bringing an update to the board every month so that you can be updated on the details that we're working on. So I would like to invite Mr. Anderson to join us for this presentation.
Good evening, Mr. President Lopez, Madam Vice President Page, board members, and Dr. Miguel. I just wanted to say we're excited that we're moving forward and we're about ready to get our kids back into school. Tonight, I'm just gonna give you a brief but thorough update, knowing that there's a lot of meeting left. Just as we go through, we're gonna give you a reminder of what that hybrid model looks like currently as we move forward. Talk a little bit about where we are with the hybrid learning and teaching plans. And then I'm gonna allow some of the other departments to talk about what they're doing to get us ready for that reentry as well. So just as a reminder, we are going to be doing a AA, BB hybrid schedule where Monday or where there will be a group of students, half approximately, will be part of a group AA and part of the group will be B. You'll have students that'll be in-person on two days, and then there'll be a group of students that'll be remote, and then they flip-flop on those other two days. And then Wednesday, being a day for the deep clean of the building as well as an opportunity for teachers to plan, meet with their teams, as well as provide that feedback that's necessary for our students. As a reminder, there will be families that are opting their children out of in-person learning due to safety concerns. And so what we will be doing is we'll have a group of students that will be remote learning only and that they will be following the work that we've been doing these last few months with our remote learning plan. As a reminder, there will be two designated groups of teachers. One group will be designated for teaching our hybrid students, so that mix of hybrid and remote days. And then you have a group of teachers who will be designated specifically for remote learning only. And that will allow the, the flexibility for the work that they have to do. And as we've been working with other districts and talking to them, they've said absolutely do not require the people that are doing hybrid learning to teach those students that are all remote. It is, it's, it's not good for the teachers and they're, they're overwhelmed and they cannot keep up with what's going on with the remote. So just to give you a heads up, we'll have those two different groups, and we're getting good feedback from these schools that have come back in person.
Great.
So just to give you guys a few little bits of what we've been working on. First, we've been meeting with a cohort of early childhood through 12th grade principals and district leaders to review daily hybrid learning plans from our neighboring districts. So we've reviewed plans from all of our Wyandotte County schools as well as Olathe, Blue Valley, Shawnee Mission, and Topeka. They were, been very helpful as questions have come up in our cohort meetings. I've been able to reach out to their assistant superintendents and their superintendents to get their feedback. And they are willing to share the good, the bad, the ugly with us as they've gotten into this work. And so what we've been doing is taking what they're giving us and really helping hone in on what is gonna work for us in KC KPS. We don't want to rush to try to put a plan together, even though we know we've got to get kids in. But since a lot of these folks just started in October, we can use their information to help us better our plan, knowing that we have a little bit more time before kids come. So based on what we're learning from these districts is that they really are telling us, one of their major concerns is not to do simultaneous teaching, meaning when there, those hybrid learning teachers are working, that they will have students that are dedicated that day to some remote learning. They said, don't require your teachers to be teaching that remote learning, those remote learning students the same day that they have those in person, even though they are teaching both groups. They said, it's just, it, they can't keep up with trying to manage the class as well as kids are trying to get on and then parents are calling the school and saying, hey, my kid's trying to get on, but the teacher's not letting him in. Or kids will say, I can't hear you. And so we want to make sure that we are not putting the teachers in that so they can really focus really in-depthly with those students that are in person. One thing they did say, though, is what they can do and what they've been working with their teachers on is doing a daily check-in in the morning and a daily check-in in the afternoon to just get kids started in the morning and get them on, up to speed on what they're gonna do throughout the day and then do a check-in in the afternoon just to make sure that they're doing okay with what they've been given. So as we continue to move forward with our remote learning and our hybrid learning is we know that we have to continue to focus our curricula on those priority standards. We completed our first round of work getting ready for remote learning back in the summer and in August. Well, what we're realizing is it's still too much. And so we've been hearing from our teachers, our principals, and just, we said, they said, it's just too much for us to try to teach all these things. What can we do? And so what we're gonna do in our department is really focus the standards even more and say, if we're gonna do anything, these are the ones we have to hit hard and hit hard on, and we can do some interventions around those. Finally, in all honesty, we're hitting some, some difficulties when it comes to the health department regulations. Currently, Wyandotte County Health Department is requiring that we cohort students at all levels. At elementary, it's easier because the kids stay pretty much in one setting and they only have to have a different teacher every once in a while, but the teachers can rotate throughout the day. They are not allowing students to transition throughout the day. And so students are in the same room and then adults can transition. The reason it's so difficult at the high school and sometimes the middle school levels is you may have a homeroom class of about thirty students. We wouldn't have that many students during COVID, hopefully. But when you have a homeroom with that many students, essentially, you could have thirty different schedules. And so how do you cohort students based on their schedules? And so what we're really trying to do is figure out, is there another possibility? And so I'm giving you all a heads up with the AA BB. It may look a little different as we start getting things a little more solidified than AA BB, but we're working through those plans currently. So I just wanted to give you that heads up. So that's where we are with our teaching and learning. December first, we'll meet again and we'll bring this up to you again, and hopefully we'll have a few more of those details ironed out. But we do have students that are going to be returning to our buildings here very shortly. And I know that you wanted an update on where we are with our special education as well as our English language learners. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lori, and she is going to just give you a brief update on where we are with our special education reentry.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Good evening, board. I wanted to share as part of our phased approach to bring back our students with our most significant needs. I want to update on some numbers. As of Monday, we have tested about eighty-three students tested or started the testing, about eighty-three students, and we have approximately two hundred and thirty-three students left to test between now and the end of January. Again, the federal guidance have not given us any waiver to meet the deadlines to stay in compliance. And so I just want to thank our school psychs for working very hard to get these students tested and be in compliance. I also want to thank our parents for working with our school psychs and getting those appointments, schedules, and getting those students there to start and complete testing. We have had only a handful of cancellations, but it was no due to any positive tests of students. And so we are continuing to move forward with the testing. We have been working with our parents individually that may have some barriers. So far, we've only had about seven parents that have reached out with some barriers, and we've been able to accommodate those families to make sure that we can get those students in there and, and start testing or complete testing. So again, I just want to thank our parents for being committed to this work and, and communication. Our numbers remain the same as far as the number of parents who are still electing to have their students come back with significant needs as soon as possible. We have about a hundred and thirty-two students, so that number's remaining steady. So in the next couple of weeks, after we are able to finalize some of the details with our health department, we should be able to provide some dates on when we will be able to phase in our first group of students. So that's where we are today.
Thank you, Dr. Lori. I'm gonna have Ms. Jackie Rodriguez discuss where we are with our ESOL.
Good evening, board. We're looking at a reentry date of November sixteenth. We have about thirty students that we're looking to bring in at three different building sites. Our cohorts are no more than ten students per each level. The, as Matt said, there are some, some things that we still have to work through. So we're only looking at bringing students back two days following that AA BB rotation. So they would come in Monday, Tuesday for half a day and then get direct instruction from a classroom teacher and be home by the afternoon to attend specials or any other elective courses that that student may have. Just a reminder that these are students that are intensive language center. There are students that come to our district with interrupted gaps in their formal education. So we're trying to service them as much as possible with a rich increase of English language in the classroom. And we'll be evaluating every two weeks just to see the success of that. We've already contacted parents and are finalizing all of the health forms and ensuring that our students have their immunizations up to date. So the migrant team has been working with that as well as our advocates and outreach workers to ensure that parents have appropriate information for that. And then we also are going to begin a cycle of testing. Beginning on the 16th, we're going to go through clusters. So each cluster will have a designated testing day to begin testing the students for their language proficiency. And again, we're looking at evaluating every week just to see what's working and not working. And then we will continue to plan for hybrid services for when we come back to in person and continue to plan forward from there and how we can service more of our ESL students.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Next, we're going to have Ms. Lisa Garcia Stewart discuss how we're collecting the information about what our families want for their students when they return in January, if they want in person or if they want to be remote. So Ms. Lisa, would you?
Good evening, Board, President Lopez. We are working on collecting the motive information for our parents currently. We, the reentry form is in the Infinite Campus Parent Portal. Parents will need to go to the Infinite Campus Parent Portal and either select that they are going to remain in remote learning or they're going to choose the hybrid model that Matt just shared with you. The timeline is November 6th through November 20th. And I know that doesn't seem like enough time, but we are working to prepare for the return of students and staff. And we provided a training last week for all of the teams that will be working to support this plan at the building level, registrars, secretaries, principals, counselors, family community engagement specialists, our behavioral social workers, so that we can upload this Infinite Campus Parent Portal on Infinite Campus and begin to assist our families. We worked with the communications department to provide a number of videos. And thank you to also the ESL department that provided the language, the videos in a number of languages for our parents. So online, it shares that parents need to go to the parent portal in Infinite Campus to complete the reentry form. It also provides them directions that are written directions in multiple languages, also with the video. And then the TIS department created the YouTube video to take them step by step. In addition to the communication being pushed out at the building level and also helping families complete the reentry form along with the Department of Student Services, any calls that we receive, we want to make sure that parents complete the reentry form. If for some reason we do not hear from a parent through all of this outreach, then it will default initially to the hybrid model. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, we're going to have Ms. Lenora Miller. She will speak about where we are with operations and.
Very good. Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Board. From an operations standpoint and a support services, the transportation department, nutritional services and school facilities are all similar in nature as far as the safety precautions that we are taking for the employees and a daily health screening and providing hand sanitizer stations with us or in the hallway or entry of a building or required in a cafeteria. Again, we will be all required to wear a mask. Even on the bus, the students will be required to wear a mask. If they come to the bus without a mask, we will provide them a mask. And bus capacity for transportation, we're going to follow all the local and state health requirements that align with board policy regarding maybe assigned seating, loading and unloading procedures, it'll be in place for risk mitigation. Remedial cleaning will take place on frequent touch points after each route and will occur, so that will occur multiple times a day. Same with nutritional services area with the employee wellness and check and the hand sanitizer stations for both employees and students and staff. And then cafeteria tables will be utilized by classroom cohorts and they will contain desk shield barriers or appropriately spaced for distance. One thing different with the school facilities is all classrooms will have desk shields barriers. We do have in progress and we have ordered more to meet those requirements. And I know principals and district staff are working very hard to appropriately space those for distance. And then remedial cleaning will happen on frequent touch points multiple times a day along with a regular custodial deep cleaning in the evenings. And then during hybrid, Wednesday will be designated as a deep clean day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And then we have human resources. Jody, would you like to share?
Yes, good evening again. So in the human resources area, we are really looking at staffing, of course, to determine how many of our certified employees are able to return in person versus have a request for accommodation in various types of accommodations and really understanding what accommodations are needed and if we can support those accommodations. So just looking at our current numbers, this is as of 11/6. So as of 11/6, we have had 44 teachers requesting accommodations. And you can see there on the slide where our requests are coming from. Of course, most of them from elementary schools because that's where our highest number of teachers are. And most of the requests from teachers are asking to work remotely. So that's our highest level of request. And then remote work, the reason they're requesting is for a variety of reasons. Again, could be family members are at a high risk. They've got the childcare issues or themselves, which is the highest amount themselves at risk. And so we have asked all teachers to have their accommodation requests to HR by this Friday so that we can determine kind of what that means, what that means for students, what that means for buildings and how we will then be proactive in being able to staff those buildings and determine which one of those teachers will be dedicated to the remote students versus the ones that are in person.
And this is why it's going to be so important, both for parents to complete the survey that Ms. Stewart was talking about and for staff to request accommodations if they will need them. So that as we plan for reentry in January, we can match the number of students who will be in person, the number of students who will be remote with the staff that we have available. It's going to be very hard to have a solid plan if we don't have those two pieces of information. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you, Jody. Thank you, Dr. Miguel. Finally, just wanted to give you a quick update on connectivity. You know, our goal is to ensure that we can break that barrier that we have with connectivity issues. So the buildings are continuing to use their connectivity hubs. As Dr. Alvarez said, what they're doing is they're reaching out to those families and reminding them that they're, those are still available to engage their students in that critical learning. I'm going to ask if Stephen Linkus or Dr. Miguel, if you want to just give a quick update on Spectrum, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, good evening, Board President Lopez, Madam Vice President, members of the Board, Dr. Miguel. So Spectrum, there are still contractual language issues, so we're still trying to work through those. We do understand that does have a heavy impact on our students because we do have a student population that may or may not have access to connectivity. One of the things in working with Spectrum though is they are bringing back the 60-day free internet. We found that out today in a meeting that I had with them. And we're exploring that so that we can, if the route A does not work with the contract, then we can go to Plan B and actually still get something out to our students in our community so that they would be able to have connectivity. And the 60 days would actually last potentially longer than the contract. We will also be waiting on state funding. We'll see if there's another stimulus from the federal government at any point. And if that comes into effect, that will directly impact our ability to contract with Spectrum as well.
Thank you, Stephen. And then finally, Canvas is up and running. Just a reminder to the Board that this is a software rollout. We know that there's a lot of things happening currently for our teachers and our families and our students. And so really what our goal is, is to get it up and running and let classroom teachers kind of take it at their own pace, knowing that our goal is that all teachers will have tried something out in Canvas by second semester. And again, so it's up and running for all classroom teachers. We are still working on getting our support staff, administrators, instructional coaches to get access within the next week. And then finally, we're working on a plan for supporting our families that they need to understand how to use the system too. And so we're currently working on putting some videos together and hopefully we'll have some stuff out by Thanksgiving break. And so that is our update on all of those things, just some next steps. We are going to continue to meet with our stakeholders to get some more of these plans figured out, kind of reaching out to our other neighboring districts. We are going to review the results of that learning mode forms that are being collected by Lisa Garcia Stewart and her team to figure out how many students will have in remote and how many students will have in that hybrid learning. And then how, what are we getting from the HR department as it relates to accommodations as well? We are going to again determine what's going to happen on those four-day work weeks with that deep clean as we get moving in. That's kind of a next step. And then finally, just continuously bringing you up to date on where we are. And so I'm excited that we can continue to bring it back every board meeting until we start. So we'll be back on December 1st, giving you another update on our reentry. And so if you have any questions between now and then, please feel free to email Dr. Miguel and myself and we'll get those answered for you. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson and your team. That was a lot of information to digest. Board, I hope you were able to review some of that material ahead of time. But that was really critical information and I just want, I do want to allow for some questions because that was a lot of information. I do just want to say thank you to the team. The communication piece is so critical as we roll out this information, whether it's with our sped department, our student services, our ESOL, HR. Communication is so critical and how we communicate this information. And I just want to applaud you because over these last several meetings, you and the team have done a great job of just making sure that we have the right information in front of the Board and to our staff and community and students. So thank you for that, for all of that information. There was a ton to digest. And I'm sure we have some questions, so I do want to allow for some time for a few questions from the Board before we move on.
This is Yolanda. I do have, I do have a question. So we're talking about this board level and there was a lot of information, so if I missed it, please forgive me. For a parent that's trying to make this decision, this is a big decision for parents and they may have very specific questions about what will be accessible to their students if they do the hybrid model. I mean, lots of different questions outside of what came through the questionnaire. Who do they talk to?
So they can reach out to either the Student Services Department or they can reach out to the instructional and curriculum instruction team, depending on what their question is about. If it's about curriculum and instruction, we would encourage them to reach out to us. Like Dr. Miguel said, our phones should be up, phone system should be up and running. And sorry, our cat's in here.
Don't worry.
The cat is so excited about reentry. So now I'm just embarrassed. Yeah, so they can contact curriculum and instruction or they can contact student services, depending on what their, what their needs are.
And as usual, we encourage parents to contact their principal directly. Hopefully, you know, we're working with principals to make sure they have all of the information also. Just a reminder for, for us, not to hold the information back because when we reopen in January, it will be the principals in those buildings receiving the students. So I think for families, the easiest thing would be to reach out to principals or their teachers directly. If they don't have the answer, they know who to contact and then they can reach back to the parent.
Okay.
But of all of the departments, Matt said.
Yeah, line of defense, principals first and then reach out to the district office because the buildings will have specific information to the building.
Okay, I imagine getting a lot of logistical questions about just like what the day will look like. I mean, I just imagine those types of questions coming in, which are outside of a very high level questionnaire or you know, when you're looking and you have these, I think it's 10 days to get that submitted. I can only imagine the questions. Some people, it's really easy to make that decision and some want to know what the setup will look like before making that decision, especially when you say, when you make this decision, we're basically asking you to stick to it.
Right.
And the buildings have their individual safety and mitigation plans. I think there were a few shared with you and they're continuously updating those to make sure they're, they're good to go.
That's a good point, Matt, when, when this was presented to principals. And just a reminder that some principals were part of creating this plan with a team. They were asked to take that plan and create their own specific plan with more details for the day today. And that's why I'm thinking, reaching out to principals. One thing that we could encourage principals to do is put some of their information, those details on their website so that they are not inundated with hundreds of calls. But as much information as they possibly can share, that would be, I'm making a note of that. Ms. Clark, thank you for that.
Other questions from board members?
Yeah, this is Wanda finally, Paige. I had a question for Dr. Lori about sped.
Yes.
I had a couple of people email me and they were concerned because they didn't feel that they had the proper equipment, especially for STEPS, I think it's the program. They wanted an N95 mask and are we making sure that they have all the equipment that they need? Because we don't want to send people in and they're not protected. If they're willing to go in, we need to make sure we protect them. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody's clear that if they need equipment, we said it's there, it ought to be there and no one should have to call or write and say, hey, they're telling me I can't get it.
So. Absolutely. We do have stock in our, what we call our intermediate media center of N95 masks. Our current psychs that are testing, they have access and we can go down there and get those or request those. We are in the process of ordering some, some clear desk shield. I did meet with the school psychs earlier this week and they requested that to, to increase their level of security and safety. So that has been, or order that has been placed. Far as the teachers, they also will have access to those masks. When it comes to the nursing and some other related service providers that have to cross cohorts, they have a different protocol with the health department that they have to follow. But we do have those, those N95 masks available for staff and they can get that whenever they need it.
Because someone had said that you have to be fitted for them.
Yeah, and Elizabeth may be able to talk a little bit more about that, but I met with Elizabeth also today. And when we talk about our related service providers and some of our nursing staff, they do have a slight different protocol. And so Elizabeth, if you don't mind, kind of talk about that, the fit, the being fit for those N95 masks.
Sure, yes, I can speak to that a little bit. So N95 masks are required under the health and safety plan that was approved by the health department for the sales and STEPS classrooms. And that's mainly for the protection of the students that we know may be immune compromised or unable to wear or tolerate a mask. And so in order to protect them and keep their cohort as protected or, you know, as sterile as possible, they requested or required that related service providers that would potentially cross cohorts are fitted for those N95 masks and wear those in addition to a face shield at all times. So the related service providers and the nurses do have an additional requirement that's above what they are asking for classroom staff.
Well, I.
Classroom staff will still have to wear at least a surgical mask and face shield.
Okay, because someone said when they asked, they had to be fitted and they were told they only ordered one size fit all. So I just wanted to make sure that one size won't fit all. You'd have to be fitted for that and to make sure that it's available for everybody. And then my, since you're on it, my next question was for you. Are there nurses in every building? Because some people are saying there aren't nurses in every building. So do we have all our nursing physicians filled?
Okay, I can answer both those questions. So the first one, so N95s are not considered one size fits all. They also come in different shapes and different, just different forms. And so they will fit different people and not others. And so we do. And so we do have different sizes and we have more um models on the way that have been pla- that order has been placed and is um scheduled to arrive probably in the next week. And so um we, that's correct, that we do have some people that were not able to be fitted with um some of the uh models that we currently have on hand, but we did purchase additional ones so that we can fit all the nurses and the related service providers with those. So we will be able to provide that. And then as far as the um nursing um staff, we will be able to staff a nurse in every building that has students. So we will be able to um cover the sales and steps um buildings as well as the ILC buildings.
But here's my question. Do we currently have a nurse in every building?
Um, as of today, I would say we do not have nurses um five days a week in their buildings, not in all buildings.
And let me ask this question. Does that individual have to have an RN degree or LPN? Would they allow an LPN to apply?
Um, I believe our job description for a school nurse requires that they have a registered nurse or an RN um behind their name. LPNs are are not um, they do, an LPN is not um what we have designated as what's required.
So what happens when you, apparently it doesn't appear that every position will be filled. And yet, in our plan, we're saying that the nurses need to be there and the nurses are doing. So who's doing that? It's not the secretary of the treasury, because I've heard that's happening in some schools. So who's going to cover all of that? If we're supposed to be doing our job and doing due diligence, when does this occur if we don't have the nurse? So who's going to fill in those spots?
Randy, I have a quick question. Is it possible for get it, for us to get a list of these questions for them to answer in the future so that they can ha- have a prepared answer and have some of those things worked out? Or get a list of questions so that we can clearly give them time to do the appropriate plan and bring it back to us?
Yeah, so I I think uh, you know, and and Ms. Page, your questions are are on target. And I think, you know, definitely things that we need to know and plan for. And if we're supposed to be in compliance with these things, then we definitely want to make sure we we're doing that. So um, um, you know, we'll, we'll make note of these questions. And if there are other questions that we can't answer tonight, um, you know, whether it's Ms. Morris or anyone else on the team, um, you know, we, we definitely
But can she answer my que- I don't mean any harm, but can she answer my question? I understand, but just tell me, I don't have the answer right now. I'll bring it back. But say something.
I I can answer that. Um, we have reached out to our um nurse staffing agency that we have a contract with. And so we um are asking them to help us locate full-time nurse subs. And we did start three of those on Monday to start making plans for bringing students back to all buildings.
And Elizabeth, how many um vacancies do we currently have?
We have eight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any last question before we move on? Again, I know there was a lot of information. Um, please, 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 members, if you do have additional questions, I'd encourage you to to submit those, Dr. Miguel, and we will, we will find the answers. But I think, you know, to to everyone's point, we want to be in compliance. We want to make sure we have the 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 answers to these questions and that we're, you know, doing our job and asking these questions to make sure we're keeping our students and staff safe. So I appreciate the information, the questions. Uh, and they're all coming from a good place, I can tell, um, just to keep everyone safe and healthy. So um, but please submit questions um that you might have that we can get answers for you.
One last comment I would like to make is uh for staff, just to make sure that everybody feels um safe. Um, anybody who who feels a need to have um a specific mask, we will provide that. So don't feel, you know, there are certain requirements for certain classrooms, but if anybody has a specific uh health need, we will accommodate. So just make sure that we know what it is and that you reach out to us. We do not want anyone at risk, for sure.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Miguel, and thank you, thank you, board and staff for the information. Um, all right, we will move on along.
Next one is um to accept as an information item and with action to follow an update on athletics and conditioning for the 2020, 2021 school year as submitted by uh Ms. Romstad.
Good evening, uh, members of the board, uh President Lopez and Dr. Miguel. Uh, my short presentation tonight, I wanted to to do that. I'm looking for my file here. Let's see here. Uh, basically it's going to give you current uh up-to-date information so that um it'll help you with your decision tonight. And I am looking for my presentation. Which I'm looking at, but it's not coming up on my screen. Try that again. I'm learning that technologically I'm not as advanced as I thought I was. I've been doing this all day, pulling it up, and now I can't find it. Isn't that wonderful? Let's see, see if this does it. Yeah, there we go. Okay. So I apologize for the delay. Uh, like I said, I would like to keep it short to give you the latest information. I also want to make note that tonight's presentation is in regards to high school sports. Um, as we get closer to the start of school, that's when we'll actually uh visit about the middle school sports. And um as soon as the uh, at the completion of the presentation, I'll uh answer any questions that you have. I'd like to start off just talking about the guidelines briefly. Um, the winter sports guidance came out last week. And with it, uh, the unified government public health department has not issued an order, but it has given recommendations and it's up to the local school board whether to decide to follow that guidance. Uh, the UG public health strongly recommends, not an order again, that the district consider not having indoor sports, excuse me, um, as a result of the uh risk for widespread transmission, especially when you're having spectators. The district decides, uh, if a district decides against the primary recommendation, then they can um settle on the other recommendations for adequate risk reduction, which would be uh cohorting students, identifying uh infections quickly, limiting spectator, spectator attendance and monitoring symptoms. The gating criteria uh produced uh through the uh Department of Health and Environment shows the trend and that incidence rate currently is uh not available for 11.7. We just looked on it prior to the meeting. But we do have um information from N25 that shows that we had an increase and 11.1 a decrease. And you can see not, there's not a lot of difference between those two numbers. Uh, criteria two, uh, the week of positivity rate, this is a two-week cumulative rate, is 11.31. So we are in the orange. Criteria three is a two-week cumulative, the new cases in incidents. So as you can see, we're in the red with uh 400 out of 450 cases over 100, 100,000 population, which is in red. As you can see, 151 would be uh, would put you into the red. And uh, since we're not in school, the absenteeism is not applicable. KESHA provided just a little bit of information at the end of their fall sports. So in volleyball, there were 340 teams, two teams that started the season and 97 of them finished it. In soccer, there were 108 teams that started, they finished with 96% of them. And in football, there were 320 teams finishing 98%. The Kansas Department Health Environment also provided a little bit of sports cluster data, which shows that there were 38 sports clusters. Those are events, athletic events that occurred in Kansas. There were 338 positive cases from those 38 sports clusters that led with one hospitalization and one death. What are the surrounding schools doing? Now, I can be honest and tell you that I've spoken with district ADs uh around our area with high school ADs around the area. And it is constantly changing, as you can imagine. But currently Bishop Ward is planning on having their home games when possible, wearing masks, limiting spectators. Turner, Bonner Springs and Piper um are going to wear masks at all times, even while competing. No spectators, limit their gym size so that we're not having more than 45 people in a gym. This would include two teams, their coaches, um, any athletic training staff. Obviously you have officials, some scorekeepers. Uh, you're going to have security, you're going to have administration, so keeping that limit. Um, and the league school Atchison, which is in our league, is competing in all sports. Uh, they're only masking off the court, but they're limiting their spectators. Johnson County School, Shawnee Mission, Blue Valley and Olathe at this time are competing in all sports, only masking off the court and having no spectators. Or limited spectators and no spectators. Kansas City, Missouri Schools competing in all sports, only masking off the court with limited spectators. So the recommendation, and I can tell you that this conversation has gone with input from, from coaches to athletic directors, principals' meetings, operations meetings, and even the cabinet, is to delay the winter sports practices for bowling, swimming and basketball to start January 4th. Uh, since wrestling is a high-risk sport, we would look to reevaluate it at that time. Uh, continue the conditioning and skill development like we did with the fall sports for winter and and starting Monday through basically the Friday prior to leaving. Um, these would be the same as fall workouts, which I've shared before. We'll follow all those mitigations and protocols. The reasoning behind this is allows for our students right now to focus on their grades. We saw a reduction in grades, which we've seen across the district. But it also gives us time for them to get their physicals. We can plan something. Uh, there'll be no practices during the holiday break. Uh, the practices won't begin till we come back January 4th and it'll give us a couple of weeks of practicing. So that by the time we would start a game and mix with any other outside teams, we will pass that two-week period. Um, not competing for two weeks, um, gives us time to quarantine. And um, KESHA, I did visit with KESHA on a delay schedule and they are fine with this. They want to see us, you know, get active. And obviously it would not affect our postseason unless uh we don't have a postseason. Uh, when the season would begin, our recommendation is to follow the secondary recommendations. So for UG, carefully cohorting participating students. So at KCKPS, uh, we would separate our athletic teams and groups so they're never uh, you know, at the same time in the same area. Uh, we would also recommend that our athletes choose to stay in remote learning so as to um be isolated from the population. That way they would be in their own cohort. Uh, we would follow all case mitigations for each sport. Uh, essential workers must wear masks on and off the court, practice games. Essential workers again are coaches, players. Uh, anybody that has to be present. Uh, pay, uh, we would play only league games and surrounding schools, so we're controlling the environment our kids are in. There'd be no multi-team tournaments. Now, just to be specific, a mo- there may be a tournament, but they won't allow multiple teams in one night to be around each other. So they may break it down over a number of days where there's just two teams. Uh, quickly identify infections. We continue to do the temperature checks and the screening questions. Uh, you're limiting spectator attendance at KCKPS. We're recommending no spectators at games. Continue to limit the group sizes in a gym or a facility to 45. Um, all KCKPS high schools will have live streaming available for their home games at no cost. This is something that Pixalai has worked with the other, other schools within our, outside of our area that are providing these at no cost, the camera as well as the installation, so that uh families could watch from their home at no cost. Um, UG monitoring symptoms, we would be looking at keeping that daily log for tracing like we did with all the other um workouts or summer workouts, fall workouts or condition that we've done so far. At this time, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Romstad. Um, a lot of good information and recommendations. Board members, I know this, that there are some questions, so please open for questions. Thank you.
Ms. Romstad, I want to thank you so much for laying this out. I know we've heard from many students saying they want to get athletics back and I totally agree. So at this time, I would like to make a motion that we approve the, the winter sports recommendation that was prevent, presented to us today.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the recommendation as stated by Ms. Romstad today. I would now open for questions and discussion from other board members.
I have a question, Mr. Lopez. Um, is there a way that we can have parents and students sign a um document or letter acknowledging the fact that they, the UG strongly recommends that there not be indoor sports as part of their um, is that like a release or whatever, Greg? Is Greg with us?
I, yeah, I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Okay.
Danny, let me make sure I understand your question, your question. Your rec- is there a specific recommendation from the UG as to what we do with regard to sports?
Um, if we, if we allow winter sports, is there a way that we can have the parents and the students say that they understand that they are playing sports against the strong recommendation of the UG Health Department that there not be winter sports? That they understand it's against the recommendation?
We certainly can, could include um as part of any kind of um oh, anybody, anybody that signs up to play sports, signs of participation um document, we could include something along those lines, or at least acknowledgement that they received a recommendation from the Health Department that provided with that information.
Okay. To, to me, that would be something that I would want included to make sure that they understand that it's against the recommendation of the UG Health Department that they are participating in the winter sports.
Um, Dr. uh, Ms. Romstad, would you clarify? I thought you had mentioned that the UG has no recommendations.
Uh, that too.
Yes, the, they have a winter uh guidelines. The uh primary recommendation was to not do winter sports due to the fact that there's a lot of transmission in an indoor sporting environment, especially when you have uh spectators. But the secondary recommendation was if you did not choose the primary recommendation, then the four things that are da- appear as the secondary recommendations should be considered to follow. The um fall sports order, um, they did not make an order for winter sports. So uh, this is a revised guidance for winter sports.
Yeah. Now, the UG, it said, the letter says they strongly recommend that schools do not allow indoor sports or activities. It's not an order, it's a strong recommendation.
Thank you. Other questions from other board members?
Well, this is Dr. Winn. I don't have a question. I'm just always um it's interesting that every time I check the UG data board, our positivity rate is 17.7, at least 17%. And every time Ms. Romstad and the nurse present um the data, it's, it's different. And, you know, I, I'm just, I don't understand um the, the, the large uh variation. I'll just feel like that because the the just, the, the, the numbers just don't, don't um, are not consistent with what the UG puts on the data board. So thank you, just a comment.
Ms. Morris
Very concerning.
Or Tammy, can you, can you explain just for clarity purposes, how do you come up with the numbers that you're presenting on this slide?
Yes, I can. And I can tell you, Dr. Winn, that this was a question that came up uh Monday at our gating committee and Doc and Elizabeth did a wonderful job of explaining it to all of us because I do understand that confusion. So Elizabeth, I'm thinking you're still on here. If not, I can uh respond. But if you're here, could you respond to that question of why the UG positivity rates are so different from what we're seeing in the Kansas Department Health and Environment?
Yes, I am still here and I can comment on that. So it, it, I agree, it's very confusing. It was confusing um to me initially as well. And I did ask the um UG to try to explain that to me. Um, and so they, they did send me an article that explained that there are um three, at least three different ways that um the percent positivity can be calculated. Um, and I, and it's, it's very um, to me, it's very complicated, but um in a nutshell, um KDHE, the way that they count their um percent positive has to do with the total number of tests that are being um performed. Um, so if you have, for example, an athlete at um from Sporting KC, or you have an ER physician at KU or um people who work at a nursing home and they're testing them every day or multiple times in a week, they're counting every single one of those tests They're counting every single one of those tests as an individual test. Whereas um, the, the UG is counting those, is looking at that total number of tests and they're saying, well, yes, but in a two-week period, that was the same situation. It was the same person. It's not really a unique test. Um, and so they're um, taking, taking that um, data and not counting the repetitive tests. So when you look at KDHE, you're seeing a huge denominator when they're calculating percent positivity. It's a much larger denominator because they're counting every single individual test. So if that's, they tested fourteen times in fourteen weeks, they're counting all fourteen. And the UG is not doing that. They're saying, well, that's really just one situation within a fourteen-day incubation period. So we're not going to count every single one of those. That's not a true reflection. So when you see the UG, yes, you are seeing a much higher percent positive because they are not counting all those individual tests. I hope that helps explain it a little bit.
Uh, this is Wanda Brownie Page. I know I saw the seventeen percent as well. And then today, they had twenty point five percent for the state. And then they warned that our hospitalization is off the chart. This came from KU. So we're getting different numbers. And if you look at your own criteria, three, we're in the red. And again, I just want to keep the kids safe. I understand they want to play. I get that. But at the same time, in our whole, if you look at the whole United States, we got a problem. Then we seem to act like we're not in a pandemic and we got a problem. And we're trying to keep people alive and keep people safe.
Ms. Page, I can provide a little bit of insight to that seventeen point six number that I think you're referring to that's also on the KD, um, I'm sorry, the UG website. So that is the, um, the percent positivity from the beginning of the pandemic. So that's, the percent that's tested positive since March. And when you see the twenty-two percent, which is more, um, that's more reflective of recent data. So that, that is true that you, that, right now it says twenty-two percent positivity rate. That's, that's reflective of the last week.
Okay, um, my, my next question is, since we're not starting practice till after the holidays, this is all subject to change if, if counts continue to go up, correct? Okay, Dr. Jaeger, would you be um, willing to add to your motion? That parents and students would have to sign a statement saying that they understand, that the uh, UG Health Department strongly rec- uh, recommends that schools do not allow indoor activities, sports activities?
I think it would be dependent on the time because if, if that changes based upon when January comes, um, maybe we could just say, we include the statement of the recommendation of the UG at the current time. Because although they're saying it now, what if it changes by the time January comes? We don't want to be stuck with that one statement. I am in agreeance that we could have them sign, something based upon the current UG statement. Would that wording be okay?
So basically, it would be whatever, whatever the UG is recommending at that time. If there's, if they're continuing to say, we strongly recommend not to, that's the language you would use. If their language is different, then we would use whatever language the UG uh, was using at that time. Would that, would that be, would that cover what you're looking for, Janie?
Yeah, yeah, because right now it's, it's saying this. If, and if it, unless they change it, then it would, it would remain in. Does that make sense, Greg?
Yeah, I mean, what I'm envisioning, if this is what I'm understanding, is that basically, as part of a kid signing up to play sports or participate sports, the student and the student's parent would sign some sort of acknowledgement that they'd receive the notification from the, the, whatever it is. I mean, they would be provided a copy and sign a receipt that they got a copy and they're electing play anyway.
Yeah.
You're wanting, right?
That, that, that's what I want to make sure. I mean, I realize the parents have to make the decision, but I want to make sure they're making a decision, fully knowledgeable that it, whatever it is. And right now, it strongly recommends that they do not.
And that would, and that if there's new guidance from the UG in between now and when the sports start up, they'd be provided a copy of whatever the current.
Correct, correct.
That's what I'm understanding.
And I might say, we do have like a risk of injury form that parents have to sign that indicates that you could be severely injured, while playing and out, and outlines that. We would do the same thing where they would have to sign it prior to any participation. So.
Would it also say you could die? I, I mean, you, you're saying injury, but you could die from this. So is that going to be added to it as well? Cause what's the liability to us as a board? Someone comes out, they participate, what if they die? Are we liable for that, knowing what the recommendation was? I'm just asking. Somebody help me. Are we liable for that? And would you put, also, you said injury, what if you die? You know, you can die from this.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we would be liable for it necessarily, but I, I think, it ma- it does make sense to make sure that parents and students are at least advised of what the current Health Department, uh, guidance is. You know, what, whether, you know, uh, you have the parents, i- if you're going to allow this to happen, if you're going to allow sporting activities to happen or other types of activities to happen, I think the least you can do is provide the best guidance you can give from the Health Department. Received that. Beyond that, I don't know. There's anything you can do.
Tammy, am I correct in understanding that um, that committee that we have that meets on Fridays to, review the data and make decisions for the following week will still continue to operate in this manner?
Uh, sure, we will always continue to monitor um, the gating criteria and any information we have.
Okay, so I'll accept the friendly amendment to include the current UG's recommendation as a signature. Um, and I think um, Yolanda seconded it. Is that okay with you to have the friendly amendment?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Humphreys for that. And um, so yeah, Mr. Gohein, if you can help us with some of that language and, um, Tam, Ms. Romstad, if you could make sure that that's um, something we put together. So thank you. Um, other, other questions or, um, comments from other board members? Not, um, then we do have a motion on the floor in a second. So Ms. Smith, would you do a full call vote, please?
Hold on just a second, just so I'm clear. Um, we're adding that we want to accept a statement. Will you go back over the um, motion just to make sure that I have it clear?
Sure. So um, the amendment was to um, add a um, a waiver form that would be signed by parents and students participating in, in the winter sports, acknowledging um, the recommendations from the UG Health Department at the time uh, that sports do start up. So while right now the language is strongly recommend against, we would revisit that whenever sports do uh, start up, and whenever the parents and students sign. So um, that was really long, sorry. But hopefully that made a little bit of sense.
Okay, I will, hold on just a second.
I think maybe the way it could be worded is the, the current motion uh, to adopt the recommendation of the, um, or the winter sports recommendation uh, with the addition that any, any student or, who i- intends to participate in the activity, have a signed waiver by the student, the parent acknowledging that they have reviewed the then-current um, guidance from the UFI government.
Yolanda Clark?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Before I make my, before I say my vote, I just want to say, my vote stands for, we are trusting our parents to make what decision is right for their own families. Um, so my vote is yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphreys?
Janie Humphreys, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownie Page?
And I want to say before I make my vote, I want it, want everyone to be safe. That means a lot. It's not that I disrespect what parents' views are, but we want people to be safe. So no.
Dr. Winn?
Um, I justify my vote because I think the positivity rate remains too high. And this pandemic is not under control. Not only is Wanda County, but the state of Kansas is now spiking. So I vote no.
Dr. Jaeger?
I want to preface my vote by saying equity and equality. Other districts around us have been playing sports successfully and students have been allowed to play sports. And I feel it's very important for our students to get that opportunity to be able to play sports, to be able to get scholarships, and that their parents and them can make the appropriate decision to play sports. I am a very, very advocate of students and um, how it links to scholastic attainment. And with that, my vote is yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romstad. Thank you, board members, for your questions and for your comments. And um, as always, we'll continue to be informed. Ms. Romstad, Dr. Miguel, um, you know, as, as information and then Ms. Morris's information continues to change and as we learn more, um, please, you know, I know you'll continue to bring, bring that back to the board. Um, I would encourage um, for any board members that would like to participate in some of those um, mitigation meetings that are ongoing. Uh, Ms. Romstad, if maybe you could send the, the dates of those meetings to Ms. Smith and she can circulate that to the board. Um, and so if we have one or two board members that would like to participate, I know Ms. Humphreys and Ms. Clark have both participated in those. Um, but we can get a lot of information and input and you can ask a lot of questions and bring that back to the board. Um, the board members as well to, for, you know, if we need to change something. So if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Romstad, sending um, the future dates for those meetings to Ms. Clark or Ms. Smith. And Ms. Smith, would you please send those to the, the rest of the board? Um, but again, thank you, everybody, for the thoughtful discussion. And with that, we'll continue on. Dr. Miguel?
Yes, the next item is to accept a presentation as an informational item submitted by um, Dr. Lashonda Bilbo Irvin, Director of Diploma Plus. Dr. Irvin, um, I would like to invite you to present.
Good evening, uh, President Lopez, Vice President Brownie Page, uh, Board of Education and Dr. Miguel. Um, I'm going to share information with you regarding our virtual college fair and our scholarship initiative. Do I have the rights to share?
You shouldn't.
Excuse me.
Dr. Irvin, the um, the pres- oh, there you go.
Okay. Does everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. And so again, I'm going to bring information about our virtual college fair and our scholarship initiative. Um, during this time of the pandemic, um, our Diploma Plus team, um, campus-based staff is working very hard to make sure that our students don't miss out on their post-secondary programming. Um, we are experiencing challenges just like any other school district, and thinking of intuitive ways to be able to make sure that we can still give our students our very best. And so this year, we came up with the uh, virtual college fair in conjunction uh, with the Prep KC. All of our students had access to a four-part series virtual college fair in which during the uh, family advocacy time in high school, students could log on to the connector at nine, nine-thirty, and ten, and um, see visual presentations from uh, colleges and universities all over. Um, so on September the twenty-third and thirtieth, you see here a list of colleges that were in attendance at our college fair. Students had an opportunity to interact with the representatives, ask questions about admission processes, and really learn that during this time of COVID, uh, colleges and universities are still expecting you to attend, and that they are willing and able to partner with you and make sure that students have the information they need to make an informed choice about which college they choose. Also, October twenty-first and twenty-eighth, um, we had colleges and universities with us. We were so excited to have a West Point, uh, the US Military Academy at West Point join us on our last college fair. I had an opportunity to sit in that session. Also, um, Jackson State University um, participated and just a lively presentation. Uh, colleges and universities went all out for students making commercials and making sure that uh, students were um, really able to engage and connect. Um, so at our highest point of uh, registration and attendance, eight hundred and thirty-nine of our juniors and seniors registered and attended the college fair. So this is all virtual. Um, representatives from forty-six colleges and universities. And again, our partnership with Prep KC is so great. They actually uh, made sure that everything was working technology-wise and the connector platform was used. The good thing about this is that all of the sessions were recorded. So if parents wanted to be able to sit through some of those virtual sessions, all of it is recorded and students can go back and watch any of those sessions to make sure that, just to have a good understanding, any information that they missed. Um, it really, really was wonderful. And so here on this slide, you see just some uh, screenshot of pictures of uh, the universities represented. Um, like I said, I had a chance to attend and ask questions. And what a wonderful opportunity for our students to still be engaged and to think about um, life after high school. The next information I want to share with you is about our scholarship initiative. If you see here on the screen, this is a list of all of our universities that have partnered with us to really say that your students matter, we're investing in their future, and we're going to make sure that pandemic or not, students have the money that they need to attend college. So a special thank you to all of our um, colleges and universities that participate in the scholarship initiative. Just to give a little background, the scholarship initiative started in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen with only eleven colleges. Last year, our students received over a hundred and twenty million dollars worth of scholarships through the scholarship initiative. Thanks to the hard work of our lead college and career coordinators at the high school campus and our college advisors, this year, one thousand and two seniors participated in the scholarship initiative as opposed to last year, eight hundred and twenty-two seniors. And so although we are in a pandemic, I would say that the work that we're doing, we're reaching more students each and every day. To be a participant in the scholarship initiative, parents must have opted in by signing the transcript permission form for students to participate. Here on this slide, you can see our number of college partners and the dollars that uh, students have received this year. This year, during a pandemic, you can see that our students raised, received scholarship offers more than two hundred and seventy million dollars. As opposed to last year, when we were in school, a hundred and twenty million dollars. And so I am really just so ecstatic, so enthused. Um, please give our students and our families a round of applause for really just um, sticking with us and making sure that students have what they need to go to college, no matter what uh, time of year we're in. Um, we believe that this is the, the right avenue and the work that is happening on our campuses are so great. And so I, I want to make sure that um, students and parents know that this is just the beginning. Um, we have more scholarships to fill out, but just as a part of this initiative, two hundred and seventy-one million dollars. And you see the breakdown per campus on this side, the number of students um, participating and scholarships offered. Um, I honestly, I, I have to stop and take a moment to thank um, Lindsay Schneider, who is, uh, leads the high school work for Diploma Plus. Carleen Kramer, our data guru, who found a program that tabulated and calculated all twelve thousand scholarships forms, packaged them and made sure that they got out to the high schools. The work that we are doing even in this time is so great. And I really want to acknowledge our school partners, our high schools, because once we gave the letters to our high schools, our high schools had to figure out a way to get those letters to the students. And so if you look here on the last slide, schools had a drive-in where you could pick up your packet with all of your scholarship offers. If you look to that top left, that Sumner, they had a drive-through to pick up their letters. Wyandotte had students come in and collect their letters. They gave out T-shirts at the same time. In the middle of the screen, that's Schlegel High School. Two hundred and thirty-five of their seniors received scholarship offers during, through this scholarship initiative. If you look to the, to the bottom left, you'll see our student from Wyandotte who earned one point one million dollars in scholarship offers. We're so proud of him. To the top right, this is a student from Wyandotte High School who's also working on his associate's degree. He also received a considerable amount of money throughout the program. And so just a heads off to all of our high schools for making sure that students got the information, they received their letters and that we're, we're pushing for them. This is just the beginning. They're on the right track and the work that we're doing speaks volumes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bilbo Irvin, for that. And congratulations to all of our students. Always great to hear of the great things that they're doing and the scholarship offer, the great work of Diploma Plus. Definitely, let me tell you, it's, it's a program that we hear great things about all over, not just the region, but the country. So we appreciate the work that you're doing. Our students are doing an amazing job. And that's a, a great report of, of how great our students are doing. So thank you, Dr. Bilbo Irvin, for sharing that. Any questions? Your other comments from board members?
I would say I'm so excited. This is so, so exciting. Thank you, Dr. Bilbo Irvin. This is the second year you've continued to push, well, since you've been here, that you continue to push our students to excellence in getting the scholarships for college. We know it's so competitive right now. And thank you so much for your leadership.
Oh, I'm so excited. Just can't contain how excited I am for the students. It is just wonderful. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you because you're encouraging our students to reach toward excellence. And what better way to do it than to do it educationally? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And Dr. Bilbo Irvin, this is Dr. Nguyen. One question and one comment. So are you able to get your Diploma Plus Steering Committee back together?
We met and we're using, we're, it's the advisory team. So we had our first advisory team meeting, I want to say about two weeks ago. And so they're helping us to be able to review our CTE pathways as a part of Diploma Plus and really making sure that we're able to be on the right track with our internships and credentials. And so, yes, ma'am, we are moving forward. We had our first meeting two weeks ago.
Oh, well, good. And then perhaps you can, your next one you have, is it scheduled already? You can give that information to Ms. Smith and she can let us know so we can join the Zoom.
Yes, ma'am.
Right?
Yes, ma'am. We do have the next two meetings scheduled. I'll get that information to her.
And then, secondly, since we have a vice president-elect in Kamala Harris, a graduate of an HBCU, maybe we can get some more HBCUs on that list. So.
Yes, ma'am. That's always a goal.
Okay. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Dr. Irvin. And, and I just wanted to emphasize the, the impact that this has on students' lives. I, I agree that you push kids to reach for excellence, but you also provide the means for them to make those dreams true. So just the impact on those students' lives and families, Dr. Irvin, I mean, it's, it's really impressive. Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay. We will continue on. And the last item under Board Updates is Classroom Coverage MOU. Greg, do you have anything? Mr. Gohin, anything that you need to explain on this one?
I don't think so unless the board's got questions. This simply solidifies as an MOU and takes care of paying for some additional planning time for certain teachers during the virtual learning environment who are taking on additional classes or sections of classes while we're in virtual learning. And this was agreed to with the union tentatively and it's just waiting your approval so that we can get it signed off on and get those teachers compensated.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Classroom Coverage MOU as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Yeah, this is Wanda Brownlee Page. I don't, I think it's the right thing to do, but what I thought was vague was a part, they're going to teach two or three blocks, but they should be provided with a sub. It said in general, but it wasn't specific. And since there's money allocated for subs and we're not using subs, these people to me really need a sub to help do their paperwork. And it just said assistance would be provided, but it really wasn't who's going to provide that. Because if they're teaching three and four blocks or they're, they're having larger sessions with kids, then they would need some assistance to call parents, to check on things. And I just thought we left that a little too vague.
Yeah, that, that's probably more just a managerial directive for Dr. Miguel to direct down to staff to handle that part of it as opposed to something that would actually go in the contract with the teachers. The teacher's contract would just govern what, what they're getting paid and what, what their time would be or what, whatnot, stuff like that, as opposed to how do we handle giving them the additional support would be more of a, a management decision for you guys to make.
Well, like to see us make sure we do that because we don't, we burn people out. If we wonder why they're leaving, they're willing to do that for us and we're not providing all the assistance to me that we can to help them to guarantee that they'll come back the next year. Because you, you saw what happened at Harmon and we're in the same predicament and they're doing this for us. We don't want them to get so burned out that they leave. That's all I'm worried about. We want to make sure they stay. And if they know we're willing to help them and provide the assistance, I know you can't put it in there, but let's just make sure we help them and not just leave them. And then we wonder, wow, why did they all leave? So instead of having, you got two this year, you might not have any next year.
And, and we appreciate the comment, Ms. Page. And the guidance that instructional improvement officers are using with principals is the principal will, once, once this is arranged and they see what coverage they need, then they also look at what supports from within the building they can provide. And, and they know that they can also request a sub if that's needed. So, so we, as Greg said, we did not want to include all of that in the MOU. But principal's concern for staff is just as you expressed. So they know that as long as we have resources, the resources are made available.
Well, I hope that's the case because next year I would hate to see us with no math teachers at Harmon because we really didn't provide for them. We say all this, but it doesn't always come to reality. So I'm just throwing it out there. I would hate for us not to have them there next year.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Something we need to continue to monitor for sure. Thank you, Dr. Miguel, for that information as well. Any other thoughts or comments? They're wise.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie.
She has thumbs up.
Yes. Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody. There's a lot to cover, folks, but thank you so much for your patience and for everyone, for everyone, the presentations everyone gave and board for your thoughtfulness and thoughtful questions and comments. So thank you. We will continue to move on with our agenda with our reports of our superintendent.
The next item is a request to accept the Memorandum of Understanding with the First Call Alcohol and Drug Prevention as submitted by Ms. Lisa Garcia Stewart. Ms. Stewart, can you give us a quick overview of the MOU?
Absolutely, Dr. Miguel. Good evening again, board. President Lopez, before you is the action that is requiring your approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with First Call. Our social emotional learning coordinator, Tracy Chauvin, is working to garner additional resources so that we can provide those options for our students. This focus is to reduce alcohol, underage alcohol, tobacco and other drug use violence and bullying to support healthy lifestyles by prioritizing our school-based prevention program. So this is our prevention program that serves the greater Kansas City metropolitan area that we haven't had the opportunity to work with just yet, but we're hoping with the approval of the MOU, this will allow us the opportunity to partner with them at no cost to the district. They are an organization that is funded through donations and they seek prevention dollars to provide these programs throughout the metro area.
I'll make a motion that we approve the First Call Alcohol Drug Prevention MOU as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
thumbs up for Janie.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, I do have a question. The blue ribbons, is this along with, will, will there be a different initiative? Or are the ribbons applicable to this or is it totally different or?
So thank you for that question, Dr. Jaeger. So our Enough is Enough initiative is certainly to bring awareness around the community violence. And one of the many priorities through this initiative is begin to provide that education and prevention with our families and the community and our students. So this is an additional layer to respond to what has been happening in our community through Enough is Enough initiative. So this is a resource to support that campaign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Garcia Stewart, for that information. All right, moving along.
The next item is a request to accept an update report from Ms. Crystal Watson from the Kansas School Foundation for Excellence. Ms. Watson?
Hello, how are everyone? Good to see you all. I'll get right to this and I'll share my screen. So first of all, I want to let the board know that this Thursday is the Reasons to Believe Honoree Celebration. We will be recognizing our 2019 and our 2020 honorees. November twelfth, five P.M. There is a link in there provided for you so that you can go right to it at five o'clock this Thursday or you can visit our website. But I also took the liberty of showing you the 2020 honorees. This is not in your packet. I said, oh, let me just do this so I don't have to try to switch and go to the website. So Amber Adams, Ashley Campbell, Marie Frazier, Patricia Gaston, Erin Henson, Stefan Jones, Samuel Lockridge, Michelle, Lorik Manning, Stephanie Smith and Dr. Brandon Wim McCray are our 2020 honorees. So I hope that you all will tune in on Thursday. Dr. Brandon McCray did pass away earlier this year. But Jerius Jones will be accepting his, his award on his behalf. So I hope that you all will plan to join in. So isn't that great? Everybody clap wherever you are. Woo, woo, woo. All right, moving right along. The next thing I want to update the board on is the We Care program. We just launched We Care this year. As a matter of fact, we launched it literally a month ago. But we did receive a, a grant and it's the COVID Response and Recovery Fund we applied for and we shared that grant with Student Services. And at any time, Lisa Garcia Stewart, I welcome her to chime in. But we work directly with Student Services and I believe I gave you all this update on our last board meeting in October. But now I've got some more numbers for you on this report. So on the thirteenth, I shared with you that five thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars were given to families. At that time, we only had thirteen. It's now grown to twenty-six. Student families have received services under utility. So we can cover rent, we can cover gas, we can cover gas and electric. We paid an internet service. And this is for the McKinney Vento Act families. So that grant, we share with Student Services specifically for McKinney Vento families. So we can't help the whole district. I wish we could help every family in our district that needs support. But this is specific to COVID families impacted by COVID, whether they lost their job or their hours are reduced or family is sick and they can't work for whatever reasons. But again, this is specific to McKinney Vento families. So as of today, we've distributed ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-four cents out of that twenty-five thousand dollars. So we will continue to do this. All of the student families, they are contacted to us through Student Services. We work with Jessica R. Smith, who works with, who is the McKinney Vento Specialist, I believe. Lisa, I believe I said that correct, right? Yep. And they are the one, she contacts the families to let them know that this service is available to them through these grant dollars. And so all of those families are referred to us. So there is no like district-wide, you know, communication about this because we can't serve the whole district. It is specific to only families who are eligible through the McKinney Vento Act. Any questions, board? Be happy to answer.
Can you explain McKinney Vento families? Who are they? Is this a, a family that donated it and only wanted it to go to a certain area? I, I, I think I missed that part of it. So if you could.
I'll, thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page. I'll jump in, Crystal. So our McKinney Vento families are families that are experiencing homelessness. So the federal guidelines allow us, if they meet the criteria, to provide services and remove those barriers to enrollment. So we've been working for the last several years to really eradicate our youth homelessness in our district. And we have reduced the numbers close to fifty percent over the last several years. One of those barriers when our families are experiencing homelessness are the utility bills. So if we can work with our families that qualify for McKinney Vento services, which means they are experiencing homelessness, which is a little bit different than the HUD definition, it means that they can be couch-serving. They're having a hardship due to an eviction, loss of employment, death of a parent or guardian. So they, they qualify. They know to reach out to our McKinney Vento liaison who works really well with community partnerships. So when they meet the criteria, then we're able to help them. And one barrier we identify is the utility bill, BPU. So as a result of being able to pursue the dollars and work closely with the foundation, we can really help to stabilize as much as we can by providing this service to our families that are experiencing homelessness. So we're really trying to work towards prevention, keeping them stable in a home where they're safe with their children and in their school of origin, which means the school they've been attending in their attendance area prior or during the hardship.
Yeah, because someone sent me something and wanted to know, why wasn't it? I guess they assumed it was for everyone in the district.
Sure. And we do receive those calls and Jessica's amazing. She refers them to United Way and other community partnerships that can help our families that may be experiencing temporary hardship but don't qualify for McKinney Vento. So we still connect them to all the resources we've had all along in the community. But during this time of this pandemic and our families that are experiencing homelessness, this is really targeted for them. We would consider them the most vulnerable and in crisis.
Thank you.
That's a good question, though. I appreciate that, Ms. Page.
Well, this is Dr. Nguyen and I too want to thank both of you for explaining that because I likewise got some phone calls and I didn't have any numbers. And so is it, is it proper for you to give a name out and a phone number? So if someone does then go into homelessness and they hadn't been there, they would know to contact you or?
Absolutely, Dr. Nguyen, they can contact me at Student Services at 913-279-248 or Jessica. And we have also created a virtual office on the district website so they can.
Okay.
Contact any of us at any time, especially for those services. We went in great detail to provide those services on our district webpage. So when families wanted to know what resources or what to do when they were in crisis or in need, they could explain that. But certainly we want families to know if they're experiencing homelessness, to please reach out to Student Services so we can help connect them to the appropriate resources.
And of course, if they're homeless, they don't have internet, but what's your number again? They may not even have a phone, but 279, what was it?
2248.
2248, okay, thank you very much.
Dr. Nguyen, I would just say, and to Ms. Page and to all of our board members and any, any families watching, I mean, they should, our teachers in the district are aware of the McKinney-Vento resources and so families can talk to their teachers and teachers are well-versed in how to help them navigate through the, through the district to get to Jessica or to Ms. Garcia Stewart to navigate and get some of those resources. So you're absolutely right, Dr. Nguyen, some of those families may not have internet to get to our website, so, you know, and teachers are always looking out and can reach out to those families as well and make those recommendations or referrals to our Student Services Department. So thank you for that information, very helpful.
And if they do not have Student Services direct number, I want to remind everyone now by calling the main number, one of the options that they will have is Student Services. So just knowing the main number for the district will suffice.
We'll diligently be working to find more dollars to help, you know, the families as much as possible. And I'm really excited about the partnership that we have with Student Services because this gives us an outlet to be specific to families that, to help prevent that homelessness but help them in other areas as well. That, we'll let you know that in the past, the foundation has supported the McKinney-Vento families even with transportation. And we've also provided funding for hotel stay. There were a lot of families that were having to stay in hotels at some point and I know in the past, the foundation has supported by spending up to close to $25,000 just in that alone. So we're continuing to do that work and wanted to give you that update so you knew that we were specifically trying to help during COVID.
Crystal, I have one question. Did that come through the CARES Act funding?
So there are two different grant, big grants out there. There's the CARES Fund, that's a great question, Janie. There's the CARES Act Fund and then there is, which Unified Government and the state have provided. And then there is the COVID Recovery Fund, Emergency Relief Fund. And those dollars are through like United Way, Mark, there's some different private, well, I won't say private, but other nonprofits where those dollars came in from private donors and CARES is specific federal. So that, those are the government dollars and we did receive government dollars. We received the CARES Act through Unified Government. We see the amount of $24,000, like $260, we received that, but that we have set aside for technology and the funds that we went through, through the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation, they're the ones that are managing the COVID dollars.
Okay, so you.
So they're two separate buckets of money.
So this one's not the one that's got the time limit on it?
That is correct.
Okay.
You're absolutely right. Unified Government State wants those dollars spent by December 31st and the other dollars, we've got 12, we got 12 months.
Okay.
Excellent. All right, that's all I have. Thank you, board, and I hope to see you guys online November 12th.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
And thank you for that partnership with Student Services. Again, we appreciate everything Ms. Watson does to help the community and that's the perfect partnership because Ms. Stewart knows the needs and Ms. Watson is providing the resources, so we love that. The next item is a request to approve the Leadership Development Plan and Contract with Garing Consulting for $36,000. And this is the Leadership Professional Development Plan that I brought to the board last board meeting to support the development of district leadership as a cohesive team focused on organizing our work to support the board vision and priorities and also to provide coaching for the Instructional Improvement Officers to continue their growth as principal supervisors and be a partner, a thought partner for the superintendent to strategically lead the district leadership.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Leadership Development Plan Contract.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, would now open it up for comments, questions, discussion?
This is Wanda Brownlee Page and my comments, Dr. Miguel, I have called you and I expressed my concern and I don't think we should spend the money on this. It always blows my mind that we hire all these people at the top level, we're paying them six figures and we gotta still train people? I'm in awe of that. And I think we have a professional development department, we have a communication department, and we have you, Dr. Miguel. And I think with your leadership, that you all could put that together and not have to pay a dime for somebody else to do it. It's like that commercial, why do we have to dishwasher? I think we have all these people, they're qualified, paid, certified, and then we still gotta train people? That's scary.
And Ms. Page, I, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate the vote of confidence. I do want to remind the board that the funds that we're using for this is carryover money from professional development from last year. That's money that due to the pandemic, we, if it was slated for people to travel to conferences or those conferences were canceled or done remotely, this is money that was not spent from last year's professional development money. Professional development funds can only be spent on professional development and also a reminder to the board that we're not providing professional development for leadership district, for district leadership on the specific skills that they need to perform their duties for the job they were hired. This is how to develop us as a team, to have common goals and common strategies to implement the district goals and the board priorities. So it's more like a professional development as a team, not as individual members of leadership.
Dr. Miguel, do you need anything from the, from the board before you, I mean, if this is approved, do you need anything from us? I'm a strong supporter of, of development, no matter where you are. And so what will you need from us or will you need anything from us?
All I need tonight is approval of the contract.
Okay, but I also heard you talk about goals and direction and all of that and we can talk about that later, but I just want to make sure that you have what you need so that your training is successful because I'm also a strong advocate of making sure that training is directional, so.
Yes, and I think we do have what we need and I will share some of the goals with you, with the board during our executive session, so you can also provide some feedback and I would really appreciate it. The goal is to make sure that we're moving in the same direction.
Okay.
I too want to say I am a strong advocate for professional development. I think that's why it's important to keep in the budget, just like we hire teachers and they have certificates. See, we, we, it's important that we continually have growth to strive and improve and strengthen and sharpen, you know? So I'm a very strong advocate in, yes, there are skills, yes, there are areas that we are proficient in, but we have a blind section that always is important for someone to come from the outside and be able to sharpen and help evolve a team. You know, the team is effective and can work, but those outside partners are very important to have that professional development with a directed target. And I agree with Yolanda, I think that we've given you some initiatives of our board priorities, but as we sharpen ourselves with our professional development as a board to get to know our norms, to get to know our mission and vision, it's important that we give the proper direction to you all so that it aligns from the board along with the cabinet, so.
I agree. I also want to remind the board that this aligns with the strategic theme four from our strategic plan that addresses attracting, developing, and retaining employees in the second objective that talks about increasing opportunities for learning, growth, and development. And just like Dr. Jaeger said, as professionals, I think when you talk to people who leave the district, sometimes some of the reasons they may mention is the lack of opportunities. I'm not talking about our district specifically, but when people leave jobs, lack of opportunities for growth. So as the district, we always want to make sure that we have enough opportunities for everyone at every level to grow and continue that professional development.
Now, this is Dr. Nguyen and likewise, I've had this conversation with you, Dr. Miguel, but I do not, I'm not able, first, let's say, all of us, no one can deny the importance of growth. So I will vote against it because I think, one I very share with you, duplication of services and I do believe that professional development is lacking in some other areas where that there would possibly be more, in fact, strength as far as individual, as all way, as also contribution to our district. So my no vote is not that there is not a need for, for development. Everyone agrees to growth, everyone agrees to development, but this appears to be a duplication in, in services and straightforward, you are, it's kind of like you're reaching back in time and maybe because I know the individual, you're not, it doesn't appear that you're moving, that we're moving forward. It appears that by reaching back in time and using this source, that it actually isn't, isn't moving forward. But I'm going to be honest and straight with you. And so that is my, my goal, that is why I was elected. And so I will have to vote no because I do not believe this is a, a good use of, of resources, professional development or not. It's not a matter of where pile of money comes from, it's how we use the resources we have. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen.
And I'd just like to say that we're in a time where there are many dynamics of changes that is taking place. We've lost our superintendent who resigned, we're dealing with COVID-19 and then other positions are not, people are resigning from that. We have chosen her as intern superintendent and strong guidance and leadership requires the support for us to make sure that we have clear directives. And so until we can specifically put someone in place that will lead and guide in direct, we have to trust that Dr. Miguel is going to do whatever's necessary. She needs some help. And so therefore, I'm in favor of us moving forward in utilizing this Leadership Development Plan so that she can grow and not only her, but other staff members within the district.
Thank you, board, for your thoughtful consideration. With that, Ms. Smith, I would call the vote, so please go and do roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, no.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, I explained, no.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Great, thank you, everybody. Okay, so with that, I know we still have a few things on our agenda, but I want to be respectful, do we need a quick bio break for some folks or can we keep moving? Quick bio break, 7:45, five minutes, would that be sufficient for folks to come back at 7:50-ish? Thank you. Okay, I'm looking around to see if we have back or if we're still missing folks. I should have given folks a little bit more time, it looks like. All right, I'm gonna do a quick check here. It looks like I've got Ms. Humphries is here, Ms. Clark, are you back yet? There she is, Ms. Drew? Thought I saw Dr. Jaeger, there's Dr. Nguyen. Okay, Ms. Page, let's see if I see Ms. Page somewhere. There's Ms. Drew, okay, Mr. Goheen.
I don't see.
Yeah, I don't see Ms. Page, did she drop off? It looks like she's not even on, as one of my participants.
I mean, maybe she got lost. Like, I'm usually the one that gets lost though, not Wanda.
Okay, well, hopefully she will rejoin. Ms. Smith, would you mind sending her just a quick message to see if she's maybe having technical issues? Because I don't even see her as a participant on the Zoom, so. Or Mr. Hoda, if you wouldn't mind, maybe just emailing her the, the link to the, to the meeting so she has it in her inbox and can join us. To who? To Ms. Wanda Page, if you could just send her the, the link for this meeting, just in case she's looking for that. Thank you so much. So in the interest of time and just, you know, because we're back in session, we will continue on with our meeting. Thank you all for entertaining the break. So we will move on with our KKK Public Library.
I made a motion that we approve the payment of bills for the Kansas Public Library.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All right, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yeah.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library Human Resource Supported Operation Recommendations.
Okay.
I seconded.
Moved and seconded, any questions or discussion? Just want to make sure that includes the, that board notices that that includes the library holidays and schedule closing dates that were provided to the board?
Yes.
Okay. No questions, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark? Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Win?
Dr. Win, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Okay, then we have our report for Ms. Levers.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Uh, Dr. Miguel. Um, my report is right in front of you, but I'll just kind of share with you some highlights. Um, we continue to add uh, patrons to our e-community use. We've added two hundred and three for the, the month of uh. O- October. Um, and of course our services, um, we had about ten thousand, seven hundred and six uh, people reading and entertaining. Uh, using our entertainment services. Um, twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty-four people uh, search our databases. And of course our database sessions, we had a thousand, two hundred and fifty-two people doing that. Uh, our curbside uh, continues, we continue curbside pickup in October. We had a total of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and nineteen. Items checked out um, with our curbside and we placed seven thousand, four hundred and ninety holds. Um, we do have a lot of patron comments that I thought maybe you would love to uh, hear, but I'm not gonna go through all that. I'll just kind of uh, use a few. Um, uh, a couple of people wrote in. Thank you so much for sharing this added info. A house with a sad family history and that's our programs that we uh, um, share with our patrons. Uh, and, and we also shared a video on, on the sour castle and people were really, really excited about that. Uh, one person said, my kids have loved the crafts and said their tree bags was the best Halloween bag ever. And the presentation was the best. Uh, thanks for going above and beyond and that's the holiday, uh, the um, Halloween tree bags that we had our patrons pick up. Um, and uh, also, um, we had um. Uh, staff, not staff, uh, well, staff handed out some uh, craft uh, kits and um. Turner family uh, posted some pictures of how the kids uh, worked on their craft kits and they wanted to share because she thought it was just. Uh, fantastic that the, you know, the staff comes out with all those uh, craft kit, kits. Um, uh, every uh, month, our staff at Ethel Schlegel uh, do, do nature walks and uh, this. Uh, the, it depends whether it's animals that they share with the patrons or the trees, what kind of a tree it is. They'll go out and do that live with our patrons. Um, this October, uh, they did um. Some of the trees at uh, Ethel Schlegel had the persimmon. Uh, and um, I never knew that they were kind of a fruit. I always thought it was wild berries or something growing, but apparently. Um, it is uh, something that uh, people um, love to, to read about. It's according to the Farmer's Almanac. You can predict the winter weather with the persimmon seed and these seeds, when, once you cut them open from the trees. Um, the folklore goes, if the kernel is a spoon shape, because it's three different shapes, once you cut that kernel. If it's a, a spoon shape, it means lots of heavy wet snow and uh, will fall. If the kernel is forked shape, it means you can get uh, or expect uh, light powdery snow and a mild winter. And if the kernel is knife shape, it means expect to be uh, cut by icy cutting wind. So apparently this year. According to the person that they, they opened up, if it holds true, we may be shoveling some snow this year. So just some uh, information that I thought uh, was adorable and that uh, the people um, wanted to hear. And um, so a very uh, one of our patrons wrote in and this person said, interesting, very cool. I'm seminal slash creek. I never heard of this, but so glad you shared on the persimmon seed uh, post. So they are really, really excited about that. And then one last uh, thing that, that I wanted to highlight. This post was on our uh, Twitter and we had one million and fifteen thousand people. Uh, 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 respond to that. That was our largest response ever. So, you know, I was impressed too because I never knew about this fruit and if you ever go to the uh, Ethel Schlegel Library. Uh, staff will, will be able to kind of direct you and show you where those trees are. So that is my report for this evening. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Levers. Any questions for Ms. Levers?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your report and for all the, the work you and all of our library team are doing, Ms. Levers. Really appreciate it. Uh, I, at this time, I do want to give a quick update to the board. Um, you should have received an email from me. Just. I wanted to follow up on a couple of, on, on one item. Uh, if you recall back a month and a half or two ago. We received a feasibility study report that the board had commissioned regarding our main library from Garcia Architecture. And that was submitted and presented at a board meeting um, about a month, month and a half, two months ago. Um, subsequently, uh, you know, we've had a couple of conversations with uh, with a couple of board members and. And uh, our, our Ms. Levers, our Director of the Library and some other partners in the community who are, who are really interested in seeing. Um, what potentially could come of uh, our main library. So um. Board, I, I did email you a quick update regarding um, some conversations that have happened, nothing concrete. Um, but I, you know, uh, I do think it's, it's, it would be helpful and I asked Ms. Levers and Mr. Covington. To just listen to some conversations and questions um, regarding the main library, that feasibility study. Um, and potential options. Obviously, they cannot and would not commit to anything of, you know, but, but definitely have listening and um, you know, have some, some conversations about. Potential opportunities maybe, um, and then look at challenges, uh, you know, that face our main library as well. So um, but I, I do think uh, has been, has been brought up by several board members. This is something that we as a full board. Need to have a longer and a more detailed conversation about next steps, if any. Regarding our main library and that feasibility study that was presented to us. So I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware. Um, and that um, to let you know that Ms. Levers and Mr. Covington will just have some, will just listen in. Um, some folks who, who have, are asking some questions and would like to give us some information. Um, but all of that would be shared and brought back to the full board. So um, any questions on that? Um, I, I, I do, again, I do want to respect the board and, and understand that any decisions would have to come from the full board. Um, but wanted to make that, make you all aware.
Well, Mr. Lopez, I would like to make a substitute suggestion that uh, you, that we invite uh, Lane Ford to come to the full board. And um, share those same ideas so that if they were to ask a question that maybe Ms. Levers and Mr. Covington could not answer. Um, we could give them our direct input and I think that would be probably more beneficial and time and saving of time.
Sure, uh, and, and that's a great suggestion and, and thought, Dr. Win, I appreciate that. Uh, I think at the time. We weren't sure if, if um, you know, Lane Ford and that group uh, were ready to come and, and give a presentation to the board or if we had the time at the board, board meeting. But if the board is wanting them to present, I could certainly, you know, Ms. Page and I have had a couple of conversations with them. So we could reach out and ask them to come to the, present to the full board if that's the will of the board.
It's nothing formal. There's nothing formal. So we're just engaged in um, polite conversation and exploration. So the same presentation they made to you and, and Ms. Page and I think Ms. Drew was with you, correct? They could make the same presentation to the rest of us. Cause you know, things get lost in translation. What you hear, what someone else hears, they may, it may not be the same as, as we all hear.
Sure, and I'm happy to invite them to a board meeting. Um, if that's, if the, the board is interested in hearing from them, I'm happy to do so. I thought. It would help to have Ms. Levers and Mr. Covington do some initials, just listening and, and asking some questions and then, you know, bringing some of that back, but you know, we can skip, you know, we can have them come.
Hasn't Ms. Levers, hasn't, you guys didn't meet with them before?
We did, yes.
And you didn't ask those questions?
We did, yes.
But Ms. Covington was not with us at the time that we did meet with them.
Well, Mr. Covington was at the last meeting with us. He was there. At the last meeting we had with them, Mr. Covington was there.
Okay, thank you for correcting me. Okay.
So I, I think the whole point is that we just wanted to, we just wanna, you know, not stall the conversation and I, I. You know, I just thought it'd be good to have our Director of Libraries and our CFO have a conversation, but I'm happy to reach out. And have the group um, come and give a presentation um, to the full board if that's the will of the board.
Well, you know, I had to call it a presentation, but you can sure call it expanded conversation. Because again, I mean, like you say, maybe they're not ready. Well, maybe they haven't got all their numbers together. But if we're going to have, if Ms. Lever is gonna spend her time and Ms. Covington is gonna spend their time. Then those, those preliminary conversations, it's not gonna be a one meeting deal. So I don't, you know, do you want a motion or do you just want a consensus?
I don't think this requires a motion. Um, if, if. If there's consensus to have them come and, or come and have a conversation, um, we can definitely do so. So. Um, I can reach out to them and, and Ms. Levers, you and I can, can connect with Ms. Page and then we can have, invite them if, if they're ready to come and present or have a conversation with the board.
Why, why don't you guys reach out and see when, when they might be ready to come and, and uh, share some of their ideas with us? Realizing that we're coming into a busy season and we've got quite a few meetings that we're gonna be having concerning the superintendent search. And see what, what their schedule looks like.
Perfect. Happy to do so. I was just, you know, trying to save, save everyone a little time, but um, so happy to do so. We'll move forward with that and I'll keep y'all updated. Ms. Page, you and I can connect with Ms. Levers and Mr. Covington and get something rolling. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I would now entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Can I, I, I would like for us to remove item B.
Okay.
Which item was that? B, the Human Resource Report and Recommendation.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus B.
Second.
All right, Ms. Smith.
You're on mute.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Uh, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Yes.
Dr. Win?
Dr. Win, yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Um, okay. Ms. Page, um, uh, do you need an executive session for that HR conversation or?
No, cause I, it just, wanna make sure we're on the right road. My concern is about the above and beyond pay. I got uh, a gentleman, he told me to use his name. The others I didn't get permission to. But uh, Michael Johnson, who was concerned, he said he was told, and I won't say the employee's name. But they told him, he had to have his form in by Wednesday and the detailed form Dr. Miguel talked about. And we want people to be treated fairly. We want it across the board. And there were three other gentlemen who had been in you responded, I thought if I'm not mistaken. I won't say their name because they didn't give us permission to use it, but something's wrong. Because they keep saying that they've submitted forms and then we're told they didn't provide enough information. And then the information people are asking them for, cause Mr. Johnson said, he was told, he got the email Friday at four forty-one. And told to have it in by tomorrow. You gotta give people time to fill the things out. And, and they feel like some of this is already in because they turned their time sheets in. And it's just like they're duplicating and just some, for some clarity, we gotta make sure. They understand, we understand what's expected and we want to do it across the board and make sure that it's fair. And we're still getting too many complaints about this and they're saying that it's not fair that they've given information. Then the gentleman said, he gave information and the person who was working with him died. So this person had COVID. I'm not giving their name, but this is what I was told. And again, we want to make sure that we treat people fairly and make sure they get their best pay.
Uh, 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 Wanda, this is Kelly, Ms. Page. Um, I think probably what they might be referring to is prior for this pay period, they needed to get it in because. Remember, we're on whatever day it is, it's the tenth. Uh, so that's just, I, I think that might have been, I don't know, cause I didn't talk.
He didn't take it like that, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no.
He was more or less felt like he was told that was it. You gotta have it in by Wednesday. And we need to be clear and then there's some other names I didn't, you know, they didn't give me permission to say it. But we gotta work this out. I don't understand what's going on. And they keep saying, they felt like they gave information. They feel like, you know, they did jobs, jobs with, that they felt put them in danger. He said he worked with the guy who died.
But let me just say, I think the criteria has been very well set. We are making sure, so remember what we talked about earlier is that we are asking all employees to sign off. On the document, which was a great suggestion because I think that's one good way to clarify it for everybody. I understand a lot of people feel like. They should have received above and beyond bonus and I'm not here to say people didn't work hard, cause I, I know that they all did. Um, but there are just certain qualifications and criteria that we set and so it may just be that it doesn't fit that. Um, we, you know, I, I know there's an appeals committee and they listened to all those comments. And then they also asked for people to give more information back. So it probably is just a miscommunication that what they were told is to get it into.
Tomorrow is not the last day to submit this. They can.
Yes, absolutely. So now, you know, they have to provide more information. So if it's just providing the same information that got them a no, that probably isn't gonna be sufficient. What they need to do is basically provide the information they've been asked to, to provide. I, and again, I don't know anything about this particular request. So I'm just talking off the top of my head, but I do know that we have asked people who've submitted an appeal to provide more specific details. Um, because we do need to know how many hours they worked at something that was, that qualified off of our list. So I'm hoping through the communications that we're sending out to employees where we're asking everybody to sign off on that. That will become a lot clearer. I know some supervisors have been talking to their employees as well. Um, just to make sure that it's clear as well. So we're, we are trying to, you know, make sure that the message is, is getting out there. Um, and certainly we will keep, you know, we will keep these appeals open. Um, as long as we feel like we need to as an organization to, to make sure people have plenty of time to get their appeals in.
All right, cause I just wanted it to be clear and I promised that I would ask. So tomorrow is not the last day. They can still submit it.
Mm-hmm.
And when will there be a cutoff day?
Well, we haven't, we haven't decided that yet. I was kind of waiting to see how many, you know, how many more uh, appeals we actually did receive. Uh, because I do imagine after some point, because we've been, this is I think the fourth pay period. That we've ran um, above and beyond bonuses through the, the payroll. So I think we've got most, all the groups handled and we are going back to the supervisors and asking them again, is there anyone else? You know, that we need to be considering because if there is, we want to pay it. We don't have any reason not to. Um, we just need to make sure we get the right information from individuals.
And Ms. Page, um, I, I was just gonna clarify.
And Ms. Page, um, I, I was just going to clarify, um, because I know it can get frustrating when you have to provide the information, but we have to have, um, the details of, um, we're not, we're not paying a blanket, um, amount. So for example, when somebody says we have already, uh, um, turned in time sheets, um, that doesn't mean that your full day was, um, doing the work that would, um, qualify for above and beyond pay. So for example, a person works eight hours a day and let's say, uh, three hours out of the day, they were used to distribute meals to the public, which would qualify for that above and beyond, then those are the hours for which they would get the bonus, not the, the eight hours of the day. So not to say that this is the case of this gentleman, we will look into it. But that's the reason why, um, details like that are, are requested. Because it's not an automatic, you worked five days a week, eight days, um, eight hours a day and you get the bonus for all that time. It's for the specific work that may have put you at risk and makes you qualify for this bonus.
Yes, my question is, um, when, have, prior to this meeting, was that information sent to the superintendent or Kelly for investigation?
No, I just got it.
And so two, what is the procedure that board members should be following to ensure that you have the correct information to do proper research prior to, um, announcing or saying procedures when followed? What is the expectation? Maybe this is something that we need to establish as a board. What are the expectations for when we get, um, complaints or concerns in our board handbook? It says that we must forward that information immediately to the superintendent for handling. And so I guess I need clarification as to what are the expectation of board members to, number one, when we receive issues, where do we route them to? Uh, in my opinion, I do not think board members should be responding back with, oh, you said it was Tuesday, no, it was this day. I don't think that that is the board member's responsibility. I think it's important for all facts of, if paperwork turn in to protect ourselves legally and all of that, it should come directly from the district. So clarification for the person who may be reaching out to us should say, you, I have, I will have forwarded this to the superintendent and HR. This is what they will get back with you, rather than providing information of, of facts that we do not know. So I guess I, again, please clarify if one, if we are still sending them to the superintendent for proper routing. Second, the responses, what is the expectation, Randy? Or, um, you know, others of what should the board be responding back to the public to protect ourselves accordingly?
So before we get into a back and forth about this, before, before we get into a back and forth, what?
Well, no, I just say, I, I forwarded it to Dr. Miguel. So the, the expectation, Dr. Jaeger, as far as I'm concerned, I forwarded Dr. Miguel the, uh, concern uh, about the, um, email I received and I think, um, Randy likewise. So, you know, the, the expectation of forwarding to Dr. Miguel and copying the president and the vice president, I followed that procedure. So, thank you.
Yeah, so I will clarify, I, I do think it is appropriate when we do get, as board members, if we do get emails from, whether it's staff or community members, that, that, that we do our part and send those to Dr. Miguel and then she can forward them on and get answers as appropriate, um, through different departments, um. And we, you know, as board members, we may not have all of the right answers or have the answers so appropriate to send to Dr. Miguel. So I do think, you know, we, we have received, to Ms. Page's point, we have received several emails about the above and beyond. So I think she was just trying to clarify things, but I, you know, um, and to Dr. Wynn, Wynn's point, we did, you know, she did send some to Dr. Miguel. But I would say for all board members, please redirect any concerns, questions, thoughts to the office of the superintendent, um, and they can get the correct answers, um, to those folks who are asking. So, um, any other questions or thoughts?
Tonight, I do have one question and I don't mind sending an email. And maybe we receive this. Where did the criteria come from for who would receive payment?
Um, gosh, I am trying to think that. I think it went back to, um, a discussion we have with the board at the very beginning of talking about above and beyond bonuses. Um, so, uh, that's what I recall, but it's been set for this whole time period. We've been using the same criteria, um, from the very beginning. It's never changed.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying it's changed. I'm wondering where did it come from and we, and we can talk about it later. I just, I just don't remember who set the criteria. So that's really my, my question. Okay.
Any other questions on the HR report?
I make a motion that we approve the HR report and recommendations.
I'll second. Ms. Smith, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Wynn.
Dr. Wynn, yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, so next, can we pay our bills?
I make a motion to pay our bills.
Second.
Sorry, I had to come off mute a second.
Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Wynn.
Dr. Wynn, yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, so now I would entertain a motion to recess the executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel, um, for fifteen minutes, going in at eight twenty-four and coming out at eight thirty-nine.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Smith.
Just a second. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Yes.
Dr. Wynn.
Uh, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Yes.
Great, see you all at eight thirty-nine. Open session, please.
Second.
All right, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Yes.
Dr. Wynn.
Yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alrighty, would entertain a motion to go into exec, recess and executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel or protect the privacy interests of the parties involved for thirty minutes, uh, going in at eight forty-three and coming out at, ooh, nine thirteen.
Are you sure?
Can we have ninety-five? Can we do eight forty-five?
Can we do what? I'm sorry.
Can we do eight forty-five to give us transition time?
Eight forty-five, okay. Eight forty-five to eight fifteen.
Okay.
So moved, second.
Moved by Dr. Jaeger, seconded by, hold second, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Yes.
Dr. Wynn.
Dr. Wynn, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, only four of us came back.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, yep, so I would entertain a motion to come back into open session.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew. Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Yes.
Dr. Wynn. And Dr. Jaeger.
Yes.
Okay, would entertain a motion to go back into executive session at nine eighteen, coming back out for twenty minutes and coming out at nine thirty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Yolanda.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Stacy Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody. All right, we're back. Would entertain a motion to come back into open session, please.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Dr. Wynn.
Yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
Yes.
All right, we are back in open session, everybody. Um, just want to thank you all for a great meeting, um, unless there's anything else from anyone before we go. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Hey, Randy, really quick, are you going to send out the, when we're meeting with the firm?
Yes, so that actually, um, you should have received information, um, uh, in your email. That is on November eighteenth, so next week. Um, it's been set and Ms. Smith will publish the, I think she actually has, she's published the, the meeting already. So it's been noticed. The eighteenth was the first date that we set at four PM, I believe, so that is next week.
Yep.
Yeah, we will see all of you next week.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
Calendar, I just did see it, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
Thanks for seeing, thanks, Ms. Smith.